Into the allowed housing types in the study area. Right now, there is a prohibition of townhomes or attached dwelling units within the BC-1 zone. That's our North Waneta neighborhood center. And option one would be to retain that prohibition. Option two allows the alternative for townhomes, but only to be permitted within a mixed-use development. Because of the commercial requirements that the Planning Commission has also recommended for property or buildings abutting along 100th Avenue, this option prohibits townhomes along that north-to-south right-of-way of 100th Avenue. And then finally, option three, this was where the Planning Commission landed with their recommendation. This option allows townhomes as an independent use, meaning that they can be proposed and completed as their own project, but they would be geographically limited to the western half of the site. We've provided just a quick visual aid of what that would look like. The left and right boxes are meant to describe the same area. On the left, you can see the study area outlined in that dark color, with the hatched area being the Planning Commission recommendation of where townhomes are appropriate, leaving that intersection open, or the property closest to the intersection, open for a higher-density mixed-use development with that commercial frontage along 100th. The image on the right is a conceptual rendering of what that could look like in concept. So before landing on option three, the Planning Commission weighed different methods for ensuring high-density mixed-use development along the intersection and back, I'll go back, to ensure that the eastern half of the portion of the site develops with high-density mixed-use development, as is envisioned in our neighborhood plan policies and our general neighborhood center guidance through the comp plan. So to ensure that that type of density materializes, the potential options that the Planning Commission weighed are shown on screen. The first three of these options, the first three listed kind of in their own area, they do present some administrative uncertainties for staff, but there is a possibility for phased development and density plan requirements at the initial project approval stage. Another method to ensure density would be to allow the townhomes through a development agreement wherein a minimum density is agreed upon, and there is legal kind of contractual obligations to fulfill that density. And then the third is to defer the approval of any townhome development until building permits are issued for that higher-density stacked mixed-use residential development to the east. And then, of course, another option to guarantee at some point some desired density would be to continue to prohibit the townhomes in whole. And we're hearing a plethora of concerns from the development community, including the property owners, about the high costs of multifamily development and of stacked development of this scale, and how large apartment projects are just generally not penciling in the current real estate market. There was a public comment letter submitted to you on behalf of the BC-1 property owners earlier today that outlines that position a little bit more in further detail. And so, having worked through all that, the Planning Commission came up with a simple-ish method for applying a geographic buffer for townhomes, prohibiting them within that first 200 feet of 100th Avenue, as we looked at with that visual a couple slides ago. The townhome development would still be subject to the open space and bike facility requirements that are associated with this increase in capacity. And this presents our first question to the council, where we can maybe stop, and I'll invite Chair Rutherford to provide input if he deems appropriate, but we're looking to understand if the council supports that aspect of the Planning Commission recommendation on the allowed housing types in the BC-1 study area.
Welcome back, Rodney.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, so the Planning Commission was really trying to, sort of the general principle was, we're asking, how can we enable the realization of incremental progress toward the city's goals of housing? And so where we landed with our recommendation was primarily, you know, seeking the greatest certainty and making some progress on that, recognizing, yes, it's maybe not ideal, but it's not the ideal form, but making some progress now and then keeping the space, the flexibility to further realize that vision in the future, we saw as being better than making it really infeasible for any development to occur. So that's where we landed. There is also some hope that by providing the flexibility for townhomes, the way that I understand it's proposed, it would still also provide flexibility to provide stacked flats, perhaps live-work units, perhaps even co-living in townhome form, in townhouse form. I don't know, like, if there's other rules that might get in the way of that, but that's something that we're hoping might be considered, might be viable, to further realize the city's goals for housing in this area.
Thank you. Leandra, before I check the seat, counsel, so my understanding is, the first question you need answered is, are we supportive of townhomes? The second question you need answered is if there is any sort of safety net that we want to tie the townhomes to, to ensure that we have multifamily.
Yeah, that's a great way to put it, yeah.
Counsel, who would like to start? Councilmember Sweet.
You know, this is really hard. And the reason I think that it is so hard is because we are all cognizant of the fact that there is kind of a stall in development right now. My personal opinion is, I like the recommendation from the Planning Commission in terms of going ahead with that section, but I do believe we need to put some kind of proviso on it that mandates a level of development on the other half, and I don't know if that's even legal. But I don't want to lose the fact that we're taking away an enormous commercial space. Again, taking into account the fact that commercial spaces are not getting rocked off the market like crazy now at the same time. I mean, it's just such an unstable environment. So I'm just not certain, as I said, I support the Planning Commission's recommendation around the townhomes. I like the rendering, by the way, in terms of the density. But I wish that there were some way to make the second parcel contingent on some agreement.
Thank you.
May I?
Counsel. Chair.
One of the things that, we didn't explore at length, but one of the potential possibilities, I don't know if anyone here has been to Seabrook, Co-Sole Beach Town, and if you've been along their main street, you may have noticed that some of their main street buildings were actually portable buildings with, yeah, with just facades right on the front of them. So one of the options for enabling at least short-term commercial options could be to allow temporary buildings with, you know, some sort of formulaic regulation on the facade to make it look good. And then recently, in the past few months, they've taken those temporary buildings out, and now they're building the full-scale mixed-use development that they had originally envisioned there. So that might be a way of, in the interim, realizing some of what you're, some of the concern, addressing some of the concern you've raised.
Thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in on townhomes? Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Does the current Planning Commission recommendation contemplate preserving any commercial space?
In terms of what exists there today?
Anything.
At least preserving the...
Not preserving, I guess, will there, is there any commercial space envisioned on this site if they build the townhomes?
That would be part of the east...
Or is that phase two?
...site, which would likely be a phase two. And so then, it's a question of, are there ways to facilitate temporary uses, or do we hold off until, you know, realizing the full build-out of that half of the site?
And I'll just add in, if I can, the Planning Commission recommendation does have commercial, ground-floor, commercial requirements along 100th Avenue. It's going to be based on building linear frontage. There's 70% of that which requires to be commercial use, and I have a few slides on that and then later.
Oh, sorry, okay. But that would be in phase two, not phase one with the townhomes, right?
Right. There's no commercial requirements along northeast 132nd Street currently.
I share Councilmember Sweet's concerns, but I do think that townhomes are better than inactivity, when the period of inactivity can, you know, we have no time length on that, right? That could be basically forever. So I do support the townhomes, and I'm not sure how to require future building either. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel, we have eight items. Thank you, Councilmember Falcone and Councilmember Black. I did ask that the air conditioning be turned on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think part of the reason we're not quick to raise our hands is because this is so hard. This is a really tough one. So I do agree with Councilmember Sweet that this is, I mean, we've talked about this before, we've shared kind of our wishes for this, we've, you know, I've listened to the Planning Commission meetings, I think we understand kind of the pulling forces here in different directions. And so I would say that I agree with what I've heard so far from both Chair Rutherford and my council colleagues here, that it would be that first bullet point that I would, maybe on my wish list, would really like to see something stronger than an independent use, some agreement of some use of that site, perhaps it's, you know, Chair Rutherford's example, to Councilmember Sweet's comment, you know, I feel like we've talked through some of the options. I remember it was probably our last time we saw this, there were three different options outlined to council for, you know, potential ways that we could try to ensure that both halves of the site were developed. And I realize there's pros and cons to each of those, right? And so I want to be mindful of that, and that we really, that this is a little bit of an uncertain economic times, and therefore that impacts development and financing for development. So acknowledging that, we also, you know, want to think long-term and not just short-term, right? As we know that these sites don't get redeveloped every decade, right? It's going to be here for quite a long time, so any decisions that we're making are going to have a long-term impact for future generations. And so it's a tough balance. And so I do really appreciate and respect the Planning Commission's recommendations that I feel like are balanced. So the first part of the question is, the mayor articulated it, I'm okay with, it wouldn't be my preference, but I understand and agree with that compromise on allowing townhomes for, on half the site. It's the being permitted as an independent use without, like, without requiring some sort of, again, I don't know, because we've talked through options, and I don't know what other options there are that I'm still struggling with. And so I'm intrigued by Chair Rutherford's ideas. I don't know if we have discussed that a little bit more, what that could potentially look like, could there be an incentive or requirement there, or would that be something that a third party would do, that the city would do, kind of like the, you know, pop-up shops in Bothell, like, could there be an agreement there? Like, what could that look like? I'm interested in pursuing that more, if, as a Plan B, in case there, you know, it's better than having an empty, you know, empty property there for many years to come. So I would like to see more options for what that could look like, something like what Chair Rutherford has shared.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you. Like some of my other colleagues, I'm really struggling with this. One of the hardest things here is trying to break this down into discrete items. So I know you're wanting us to answer question by question, but, you know, all of these things are interrelated, and so it's hard to just kind of provide input on this, and it affects all the other things that I'm sure you're going to ask about. The other thing is, is that the topics here, the things with these CARRs which make it really hard, is that there's so many citywide implications here, talking about policy that could change things across the city. I know we're talking about these two CARRs, but, you know, as soon as we pass legislation for these two locations, are we going to be surprised that property owners across the city and commercial areas are going to ask for the same things? And are we prepared to make those decisions now? That's what really makes me uncomfortable about all of this. You know, and Chair Rutherford, you raising issues around temporary commercial buildings and things like that, I mean, that's a citywide policy issue. Just tackling this for this one strip of commercial, you know, we have to be eyes wide open about this. And so it's, trying to kind of equate it to this one decision is just something that I'm not comfortable with. And I haven't heard that before, and you raising it today is, you know, concerns me, you know, when we have all these other really complicated issues to discuss. For me, I'm all for flexibility, I'm all for trying to find ways in which that development can happen that we're supportive of. Understand the complex issues that are out there today with land values and high interest rates and other things like that, they're really complicating things, and then demand for residential and commercial. For me, it's always been about not losing commercial land to just residential, that our commercial areas that are our sales tax basis for the city and provide services to our communities are important. And we can add residential to that, but that's not just rezone everything so that all we get is residential, and then everyone has to go elsewhere for their services, or, you know, we're dependent upon Amazon for everything. That's not what I want to see. I don't see that as the long-term vision. And so that's why all of these things are really complicated, and it's not about this one side. I'm kind of really thinking about the bigger picture here. I want, I'm fine with townhomes as long as it comes with commercial. And correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, the property owners could develop this as a commercial development, right? I mean, they could build townhomes and then build just commercial frontage and that's it, correct? Under the proposed zoning, under this, or is that not correct?
The townhomes will be limited to the western half of the area.
Then they could build commercial frontage.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Right? Yeah. I mean, so I'd be supportive of that, in that situation, where you still get the commercial and you get the residential, but, I mean, obviously, that's, is that the highest and best use of the property? I don't know. That's the question. So I'm open to townhomes, but I want some assurance that there's going to be some commercial.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
One of the things that we've got to look at alternatives is not the alternative saying, are we talking about townhomes and commercial versus what's there now? One of the alternatives that we're risking here is vacant property, and we've seen this in other neighborhood centers, and I think that's why the Planning Commission was supportive of some flexibility here that would allow phased development. And the more that we try to do something that says, okay, here's the ideal solution, we might miss a window that says, here's an opportunity to provide some housing in our city, and one of the things that's interesting about the townhome piece is its more immediate housing, and it's an opportunity for some affordable ownership, given the set of sites that we have today. So question number one, yes, I am supportive of townhomes, given the Planning Commission's recommendation. I do get that we need to preserve commercial, but I don't see the need to do something special here that we haven't done before. If you look at the Bridle Trails Neighborhood Center, you look at the Houghton Village Neighborhood Center, we had requirements there that said, if things are going to develop in phases, you need to at least show a plan that your phase isn't going to impact the ability to do this future phase. In Bridle Trails, those were actually two different property owners, where one property owner said, okay, I'm developing here, but this is how the other part of the neighborhood center could develop, achieve the vision. So I think we have that kind of mechanism to do that, where what we're hearing from the property owners is that they're not ready to move forward with the specifics of commercial. But what we need to be looking at here is, is allowing townhomes here first, does that prevent commercial from happening? And some of the things that may be part of what could give us assurances that we're not preventing commercial is some sort of, and I think it's talked about here as a development and density plan, just to say, okay, here's an example of how development could happen on the remainder of the site. Also, the thing I'd be interested in is saying, how is encroachment not going to happen on the other parts of the site that would prevent commercial? For example, if townhomes were developed and they said, oh, we're putting pickleball courts, and we're putting grass in the land where it becomes harder to remove those things to get commercial in the future, I wouldn't want to allow that set of use. Commissioner Rutherford's idea of saying, well, could we allow temporary commercial uses? I don't think we need to require them, but we just need to make sure that that is, anything that is not going to prevent commercial from happening there, I think we could allow. So I think that's kind of the path I'd like to see here.
Thank you. Counselor Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I appreciate this conversation, and I'm trying to be cognizant of the time, and I'm also trying to organize my thoughts, because I do think this is a tough issue. The, you know, a theme that I think I'm probably going to keep going back to throughout this study session is, and it's similar to what Councilmember Pascal was saying, I don't want to change the way we do things just for this site, you know, with high-performance building standards, with inclusionary zoning, there's a couple of different, these issues, these matters are all related, and they all do have sort of a theme of, are we going to do something at this site that is different than the way we normally do business in the state of Washington, in the city of Kirkland? And I'm not interested in too much of that. I'd like to kind of approach this the way we'd approach a lot of sites, and I've heard that a little bit from Deputy Mayor, and also from Councilmember Pascal, and I think But I do think we kind of owe you, you know, some direction on where we're going. So, you know, townhomes as a permitted use, I think I'm fine with that, but with an expression of a concern, similar to what I've heard from some of my council members, that I would like, what I've heard through this process, prior discussions from property owner and communications to us, is that they need to develop the townhomes in order to support financing of the, or, you know, funding of the multifamily stacked mixed-use residential and commercial space. If that's the case, then there really, I don't, I think there are opportunities here, and I'd like to, and I really want to hear from planning professionals, like, what you recommend, there are opportunities here to allow the townhomes, but also get some level of assurance about the mixed-use multifamily and retail, without upsetting the, you know, sort of overall approach that the property owner who has requested the CARR has sort of presented to us. And it's consistent with what we've heard from the public, that they're interested in the site. I do think it's really important that we do preserve the retail space in these, in our neighborhood centers, because what we're really envisioning is housing serviced by retail, where folks can walk to a lot of their services. And that really is an important element of, this is fostering sort of a walkable neighborhood center at that location. So I really want something, I just, I don't know what it looks like, I think you're hearing it from a lot of us, that we need some guidance on what some level of assurance looks like, allowing townhomes, allowing them to be built first, but still providing reasonable level of guarantee that we're going to see the mixed housing and retail, and there will be some retail walkable, it'll be, you know, there'll be some walkability in that area where people can walk to their services. So I feel strongly about that. I just don't know which of the, I don't know if it's a development density plan, or a development agreement, or deferring approval, probably not bullet three, deferring the approval of any townhome developed until building permits are issued, but something along the lines of the first two options, consistent with what we've done in other areas of the city, and without creating a precedent, that we really aren't prepared to make a decision that we're going to take a whole new approach to doing business in the city. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I think we have consensus on townhomes.
I think that what you're, I mean, I agree with what you've heard so far, it's like the mechanism to make sure that we have the mixed use coming forward. In the schematic that you showed earlier, I don't see any green space in there or any public benefits, and that would be, you know, our standard requirements for development would fall in there. But I agree with everything you say, and I especially want to hit hard on the point that Councilmember Pascal made, and I'm very aware that whatever we do here, the next project will come and ask for the exact same concession, so we need to be very thoughtful about this. Councilmember Tim Chisen.
I'm sorry to interject one thing. When we do the grocery store LRM, I would like to see if there's any relationship between that LRM and this site, since we're going to potentially take out that building that used to house the Albertsons. Thank you.
All right, let's go to number two.
Great, thank you. All right, pivoting just a bit, still focused on housing, but moving towards the inclusionary zoning requirements that the Planning Commission had recommended for both sites. So this is a familiar graphic, I'm sure. This is our identified housing targets through the work that we did for our K-2044 Comprehensive Plan update. So we know through all of that work that we need more homes for people making less. And the greatest need, really, as you can see on the left, is for people making zero to 30% of the area median income, but generally, the biggest half is for people making less than 80% of the area median income. And I'll get into who that is in just a moment, but there's different approaches and different strategies for providing houses for these different income brackets, and those approaches ultimately lead to what attainable housing and what attainable units can be built for different people making different amounts. The 50 to 80% AMI range highlighted here in the dashed red box is an underserved income bracket for Kirkland. Inclusionary zoning works great here, it works without deep public subsidy, and inclusionary zoning is strong in this income threshold or bracket, because Kirkland is generally a fairly strong housing market, and our land values and rents are high enough that developers can absorb some of the costs associated with restricting income, or income-restricted units. So that's typically where we focus our inclusionary zoning requirements. Inclusionary zoning isn't about housing the most vulnerable, but it's very helpful for folks who make too much to qualify for public housing, but don't make enough to afford the new market rate units, especially near employment centers and near transit. So that's the threshold in which we're taking a look at our inclusionary zoning requirements, as you know. So how does that relate to housing types? I'll go over this very briefly or high level, but this table helps show the sort of sweet spot where our developments, depending on what type of development they are, have the most agency or influence. So it shows the likely housing typology that would be appropriate for achieving housing at different income levels. You'll see the red dashed line that moves horizontally along the table, that is there to show what income segments are probably going to be served by development of the scale being reviewed through these sites. So the red box is to denote where, what kind of housing we're typically talking about for the Waneta sites in particular, that'll be multifamily mid-rise apartment or condo development of four to eight floors, likely six to seven stories with mixed use. Multifamily is the most likely to provide affordability in the market rate development sector, and it's the most resilient to absorb those costs, as I mentioned. The market rate units of... The market rate units eventually established at this site will naturally serve the community members who make a moderate income, that 80 to 100% AMI threshold shown towards the bottom of the red box. And with our inclusionary zoning standards, the 50 to 80% band can be served, but feasibility is very sensitive within that 50 to 80% AMI range. And it breaks down quickly the lower you get to the, or the closer you get to that 50% threshold. So oftentimes, low-income units accessible to those making 50% or, or to 80% of the AMI will likely require subsidy or incentive through market rate development to, to exist and to be produced at scale. And the blue dotted outline is just to denote that 90% of our housing needs must come from multi-unit development in our commercial and high-density zones. This point is worth remembering when you consider what allowed housing types should exist in our neighborhood centers. As you can see, the bottom, most bottom row for low and moderate density, that is where all of our middle housing work is being concentrated through detached triplex and duplex development, but it typically doesn't serve the income bracket that we're talking about tonight. So something to keep in mind as we continue that discussion. And as you, as it's also noted in the table, when you get into very and extremely low-income bands of zero to 30, 30 to 50, market rate development is not a viable option or a solution for delivering housing for those groups in our community. And as described in the packet, the 50 to 80% AMI range represents a wide variety of people in Kirkland and around the region. It accounts for one in nine Kirkland households. It often encompasses our senior folks who are on fixed incomes, many full-time service and labor workers, our teachers and nurses, as well as some of, as a group, racial groups such as our Black and Indigenous and persons of color who typically make less and that further stratifies them. The AMI is set using an income and household size, so while a middle school teacher may earn above 80% as a single, as an individual, if they have a family of, or if they have dependents and they are a family of four, you can see through this graphic that they fall below that 80% AMI threshold quite quickly. The current AMI in King County as of 2024 was $103,000 and $147,000 for a four-person So leading into the Planning Commission recommendation, we reviewed this with you in July, the Planning Commission recommended inclusionary zoning requirements would provide options for developers to provide affordable rental units that serve households in that entire range of 50 to 80% AMI. The requirement was to hold the two or more bedroom units at an 80% AMI threshold and then include some flexibility for smaller units that could potentially provide more units in exchange for shallower or less deep affordability ranging from 60 to 80%, which brings us to our next question, if the council is supportive of this flexibility for rental units in either study area.
Thank you. Oh, Chair Rutherford, would you like to add anything?
Sure. Well, I hesitate to recommend diverging from the established patterns in the city. It does provide an opportunity to try something slightly different. Eventually, you know, I, I hope that we can converge on some of these patterns so we don't have to maintain a whole bunch of these different nuances in different zones across the city. But this does provide an opportunity to try something a bit more nuanced and different, to see if we get more mix that we, that we need.
Counselor Sweet.
Rodney, when you, can you tell, talk just a little bit in terms of, I mean, what was the logic around the 80% shifting for the larger units?
To, to incentivize getting more larger units and recognizing that those are generally going to be larger families where it is easier to meet the, you know, to fold in the 80% AMI band as you, as you saw in the previous slide.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Falcon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you, Leander, for presenting this and so clearly for us to understand some of these really complicated issues. So thank you for that. You're doing a great job. And Chair Rutherford, thank you for, you know, the whole Planning Commission's recommendations and thoughtfulness in this. I support and actually really appreciate the thoughtfulness that goes into this recommendation. I think it's, it is really thoughtful. It still has the same intent of our inclusionary zoning and perhaps will get us even better results of what we're looking for as far as what is needed in the community and having, you know, it just has more of that nuance. I, I hear what some of my council colleagues are saying and I also know that we've had a lot of conversation about wanting to pilot things in the city. So I actually do think it's okay and actually worthwhile to do things a little bit differently than how we do in other parts of the city. We've been saying that for years that we want to do that. This is a perfect opportunity for us to do that. We've also had conversations about wanting to look comprehensively again at our inclusionary zoning throughout the city. And so I think this opens the door to that very important conversation and could be something that we could pilot as we begin that conversation in subsequent years. So thank you for the thoughtfulness of this. I think it strikes a good balance between what's realistic and what's idealistically needed, you know? I think it does strike a, a good compromise and a good balance between those two things. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pascal.
Thank you. So this is one of those kind of situations where, you know, we have, we have good intentions here of trying to see lower-income housing built, but we're also in this market where things have changed considerably, where it's, it's tougher for that type of development to pencil. So I see this as either you require lower levels of affordability and nothing happens or you provide some flexibility to allow for some things to happen. That's how I look at it. Now, is that the way that I, I wish it would occur? No, of course not, but that's kind of, there's other realities at, at play here that are outside of our control related to financing and, and market demand and, and so forth. So I'm all for kind of loosening some of our requirements around affordable housing. But again, I go back to my prior statement at the beginning is that it depends. It depends upon the other aspects of this development. So if we're going to loosen affordable housing, is there other things that we hope to see? So that, that's kind of where, where I'm at. And I've said this before, I mean, my biggest thing with, with these developments is the scale at the seven stories, 75-foot wall, back sidewalk, sidewalk straight up. And perhaps we'll be talking about that, but we don't have anywhere else in the city where we have a 75-foot wall, back sidewalk going straight up except for Kirkland Urban. And maybe, maybe Totem Lake Village or around there. But, you know, if, if we, if we're permitting this, then, you know, we're going to see that in, in all commercial areas soon. And if that's what we want as a community, okay, but that's, that's a conversation that we need to be having.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the Planning Commission's recommendation. I think it's a creative way to allow some flexibility to, that, that still gets more affordable housing, where they are providing flexibility in higher AMIs, it's bigger units. And then the incentive on the two-bedroom, I think is, looks at a, providing an incentive for a real need. So I think it's very creative and supportive as is.
Thank you. Counselor Sweet.
Very easily, I concur with the, actually Amy's thinking.
Amy's thinking, okay. Counselor Tim Chisen.
Maybe I missed something. I don't understand what's going on. Okay. I, you know, I don't see a current issue with these percentages, but I think we need to figure out a way to visit them, revisit them in an easier fashion without having such a heavy lift to revisit inclusionary requirements when nothing's getting built on certain areas of town. I don't know that these inclusionary requirements have led to non-development in certain areas of town, but they certainly haven't helped. And, you know, I don't know if changing the percentages would result in development or not, but zero development results in zero affordable units and zero units in general. And so I'm not, I'm not supportive of these inclusionary requirements being set in stone for years at a time and having an inflexible process where we can't easily change them. So I don't have a problem with these, but the question is, when do we revisit it if we don't see development? And that to me is, is really the question as to whether or not we revisit projects annually where we're not seeing any development. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Black, would you like to weigh in?
Well, I think I owe it to the planning staff too, yeah, and the commission. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Am I the last one to speak?
Yes.
Tough, this is a really tough one for me. I understand the Planning Commission's recommendation proposal and we talked a little bit about this type of flexibility the last time we, we discussed this, this topic. And at the time, I was really feeling like the flexibility in the proposal made sense. But I, I keep going back to this, this sort of general principle that we've kind of talked about here of changing, you know, the way in which we do business in, in the city on a, you know, site-by-site basis in this case, because we're dealing with CRs, we're kind of talking about site-by-site. And that does make me feel really uncomfortable for the reasons I already sort of articulated, which include that we're going to get the same request for flexibility across the city. I haven't, you know, I haven't seen our standard long, our longstanding standard 10% of units at 50% AMI. I haven't had, I haven't heard acute concern that that is the reason that development in Kirkland doesn't happen. To the contrary, development in Kirkland has happened historically with those kinds. And I realize economic situations change over time and, you know, there's ebbs and flows. But generally, my instinct is to, you know, stick with our longstanding standards here. But I think I'm, it sounds like I might be in the minority on that. So, you know, this is not the hill I'm going to die on, but I still stick to the principle that we should try to have a uniform standard across the city and not make exceptions on a site-by-site basis. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Black, you're going to be surprised that I agree with you. So you're not standing completely alone, but it does seem that the majority supports the Planning Commission recommendations. I, I do sincerely appreciate the Planning Commission's creativity and desire to come up with a formula that's going to work. I think that the idea that a two or three-bedroom unit is going to have two earners paying net rent is a misnomer. I think that there's a lot of single parents out there that require two bedrooms and I hate, and they won't be able to afford 80% AMI. So I would prefer that we stay at our 10%, at 50% AMI. I also realize that I am outnumbered. And so as Counselor Tim Chisen just said, I think it's really important that we do a broader, that we don't do spot zoning like this, that we do a broader conversation about what is the best formula for affordable housing, so. But that's where I am and I think I see you. Counselor Pascal.
I'll just kind of brought up a question, some of the comments from my colleagues. You might not know this offhand, but it'd be information that'd be great to get back at some point is, when did we change it to 50% AMI as a set aside? Because I thought, it used to be 80% in some cases, you know, we didn't have set asides for our commercial areas, Totem Lake, parts of Totem Lake were, as an example. When was that, and then when was that initiated and how much development have we seen? I just want to make sure we're, when we say things here at the DIAs that we, we recognize that we have an understanding of what that means.
We can look that up. I think it was around 2012 and we can confirm about that.
Leander, go ahead.
Thank you. That's just a detail of the recommendation. So moving into some more general development standards that were recommended from the Planning Commission, this is similar to what you saw for the Michael site back in July. These are just the other kind of more standard development standards that accompanied the Planning Commission recommendation. I think this would be a good time now if we wanted to talk more about height. This is kind of the, the slide I had envisioned to have that conversation. But in short, the BC1 recommendations increase the allowed height within the goodwill parcels to 75 feet where height transitions are required near residential abutting zones. And then the fire station 24 height maximum was increased to 50 feet to allow for future training facilities. We've also added the, or brought back this neighborhood center height map, this time highlighting the specific neighborhood centers as opposed to our business district centers and our residential markets. But as you can really, really barely see, the, the range of our neighborhood center height is 35 feet to about 78 feet. Some, some additional hoops are required in different areas, but that's generally what the span is. And then happy to go over any of other aspects of the goodwill or BC1 zone recommendation as, as displayed on screen if we'd like.
Okay, so you're ready for council feedback specifically on these?
If you have it. And then otherwise, I have ground floor retail slides queued up.
Okay. City manager, we are not doing well on time. So what are you thinking? Can we delay CIP?
Well, the problem with the CIP is it has a specific deadline for a vote whereas this does not. And I'm not sure, given the discussions, you'll even be finished if we give the whole time. So my suggestion would be to stop at 6:30 or maybe 6:35 and go a little late and then bring it back again.
And then we'll see you all again shortly? Okay.
Yes.
Counsel. Sorry. Any thoughts, feedback on these recommendations? Counselor Pascal.
You know, as I said earlier, we're trying to balance a lot of competing objectives and we're, we're asking for the world and, and, you know, and that's resulting in a number of things that just make it really hard to pencil, not in, not just now with the market, but, you know, potentially in, in other times too. So I don't, I don't, I don't have any problem with, with some of these, with many of these things that we, we ask for. It just seems that it, it results in higher and higher buildings that seem more out of scale with surrounding uses. And it's not about the density, it's not about the number of units, it's, it's really about the scale of these structures that, that start to really, you know, really change the dynamics of, of these areas. And we used to talk about five stories as being kind of the, the norm for, for the commercial areas and now it's seven stories. And I think part of that has to do with the requirements that we, we add to development. So it, pencil is only at that height. It's not necessarily people just want a really high building for the sake of a really high building. It's, it's more about the economics of it. And for me, I'd personally, I'd personally like to have a more detailed discussion about kind of options. How do you, what regulations do you perhaps forego and try to, and understand that balance between height, scale, kind of massing and some of the, the regulations that you could maybe loosen a little bit? I think that'd be a really interesting discussion. I don't recall having that in a while and certainly not since five-story discussions that now are, are now at the seven-story discussion. And the issue is, is, and then we also, in Kirkland, we've also been known for stepbacks over time and now we don't, we don't necessarily require that or we're not considering over time, and now we don't, we don't necessarily require that, or we're not considering that in this site. And the reason we've done that is, is again, to that, that scale, when you're standing at the sidewalk, it's a very formidable structure. It's 75 feet, straight, straight back, and you don't see that, and you're going to see that just for, you know, 100 feet or whatever, 100 feet of frontage here along 100th, and/or at Michael's, which is even less than 100 feet, I think, in terms of frontage. So those are the things that I'm thinking about. So I'd love to see options just about the trade-offs between these regulations and height, and how do you make something that works that still gets us closer to balancing all the competing objectives.
Thank you. Councilwoman Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think back to our discussions last year and our comprehensive plan, and the direction, and the input that we got from our community, and the decisions that we made based on community input is, places like this is exactly where we're going to put the highest density housing. We know that we need well over 10,000 units of multifamily housing such as this in our city, and this is just one of, you know, a handful of sites. So I feel like we would be inconsistent with community input, inconsistent with our comprehensive plan, if we didn't do what we could to really maximize what can be built in places like this. And so we've already talked about townhomes, and I understand that compromise, but as far as for the mixed use, I can't imagine us not trying to maximize as much, again, considering we also want and need retail uses as well and services, ground floor. But I think we would be doing a disservice to the community if we did not allow the height here to allow for maximizing the desperately needed housing units. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen, and then Councilmembers.
I guess, in order to go up to 75 feet, I would, I would insist upon some retail. And I think that would be the deciding factor for me as to whether or not to favor the increased height or not. From, you know, if we're discussing between five and seven stories, retaining retail on the ground floor would be my largest question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sweet?
I wonder if Leander wants to...
Oh. Just to confirm, the Planning Commission recommends ground floor retail along 100th, and therefore, they, that mixed-use building fronting 100th would have ground floor retail of a certain scale, which I have queued up in the next slide.
Okay. And then that would allow for five or six stories of housing on top, right? Okay. I'm always, we're always one slide ahead, so, sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Okay, I actually don't have any problem with the height. Walked down there last week, there's an apartment building a little deeper into Wanita that has got to be over 75 feet.
78.
Is it 78? So I think that it will allow for some balance. And as Councilmember Falcone said, you know, we don't have, we don't have a lot of places in Kirkland where we're going to have an opportunity like this to put housing. So these two cars, I think, speak very specifically to our ability to handle density at different affordability levels. So I am absolutely right on with the height. I think, I think the concept of a, of a corner that sort of breeds people into Kirkland is, has been presented by the developer, makes a whole lot of sense. I'm not as concerned about sort of those abrupt edges, I think they can be tempered by some level of stepping back, but I think this has an opportunity, and this is just blocks from my house, to add a lot of vitality to the Wanita Village area. So I'm, I'm in support of it. And as far as the other development standards, I just, I want to do, I want to do the things that we can. These are all consistent with, are very consistent with our sustainability master plan, with the areas that we are interested in. At the same time, I don't want to have undue costs occur simply because of something that's going to end up being required, you know, by design review or any of that stuff, so. It's clear as mud, sorry.
And I'll hop in just to, just to explain that the Planning Commission recommends design regulations, which do require facade articulation and modulation of some kind. Through that recommendation, the applicant would have the ability to choose what that looks like, and one of the options that they have of a menu to choose from is step-backs. So it's possible that they could choose that through Chapter 92 provisions.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I support what I've heard from Councilmember Falcone and Councilmember Sweet saying we need to take advantage of building our strong, vibrant neighborhood centers with lots of housing. To Councilmember Tim Chisen's point, I think the way that we get the vibrant commercial is that mixed use. That's where you see development today. You have to have the housing to make the mixed, the commercial happen, and I think that's what's, what's here. To Councilmember Pascal's points, we're already doing a step-back with the townhomes. I think that's part of the buffering. Everything else could be dealt with in design review, which we'll get to, probably another future slide. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Black?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Leander, you answered one of my questions, which was whether there were design standards being proposed that would require facade modulation. So that does help me get more comfortable with 75-foot height. And, you know, other, other than that, I get, what I would say is that, at the end of the day, the vision that we adopted in connection with the comprehensive plan was a fairly modest one, in the, in the sense that we focus future, most future growth in our neighborhood centers. These are two of them. Basically came down to these two CARs, compliance with state middle housing and future growth in our urban growth centers and our neighborhood centers. And with that, you know, and I think that was, that was absolutely, you know, the right approach, shaping and tailoring our comp plan to that point. And, you know, these are two of those CAR sites, and these are two of those neighborhood centers. So I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to 75 feet, but with step, we do have step-backs, just to be clear, Leander, I think you mentioned it, we do have step-backs from neighboring properties, which is different than step-backs from the street frontage. But with the street frontage, we do have some modulation requirements in the design standards for these two sites. That certainly helps. And at the end of the day, you know, we did say that we were going to meet our, you know, our housing requirements, including our affordable housing requirements, and we said we were going to do that through our neighborhood centers. So I think at the end of the day, despite, you know, hearing a lot about concerns about 75-foot height, I think at the end of the day, this is where we need to start looking at that level of density. I appreciate, though, that we do have some design standards in place, including some step-backs from neighboring properties. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. I did have an opportunity to meet with the developer recently, and did see some renderings that, that made me feel more comfortable with the development. I'd like, you know, I want to compliment the developer on those renderings and that presentation, and also hopefully make that presentation available to the public at some point, and some of those renderings. The renderings made me feel more comfortable because a lot of the site is not usable. And I think this, the presentation was super helpful, and I just hope that we're able to work it into one of these meetings, or at least an abbreviated version of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments that you've heard this evening, especially reflecting on our goals and ambitions in the comp plan. So I do support these recommended standards. I will also say that Deputy Planning Director and I went to see Lieutenant Governor last week to do a roundtable on housing. And it's really clear that we are still in a housing crisis, and we need to do all we do to maximize our opportunities. So, thank you.
All right. Five minutes late, not too bad.
It's okay. Yeah, but, so we will carry this forward again, because I know there's a lot you want to talk about, transportation investments and impacts, which is, so we'll, I'll work with the mayor and the deputy mayor to figure out the best time to bring this back for the next round of discussion, so.
Thank you all. Chair Rutherford, I appreciate you spending extra evenings with us, and thank you all. All right, when they move out, let's introduce preliminary update of the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Program. City Manager?
All right. Thank you. So this is the first of three check-ins, which we're going to see on our CIP update. The thing I'd want to emphasize in this is it is, you'll get several bites at this apple, so if we don't quite finish, we can bring some back to the future. And in addition, this is a mid-year check-in of a two-year period, so there's, we tried to minimize the number of changes that you're going to see here. And when we get to next year, we'll be having a full six-year CIP update as well. So lots of chances for you to give us updates and ideas, and for us to come back. So I'm not sure who's kicking this off, so I'm, we'll kick it over to a team, but it's a joint presentation between Public Works and Finance, so.
Who's driving?
Hit your button. Make sure you hit your button there.
It was green, and I thought it was already... Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. Veronica Hill, Financial Planning Supervisor. With me today from Public Works, I have Jessica Clemm, Senior Financial Analyst for CIP, and our new Capital Division Manager, Rob English. We are here this evening to review the updates to the CIP 2025-2030. This was adopted in December of 2024, and in our process for updating, we do that on the odd year. And so we worked with departments to look at changes for the proposed CIP, and so we'll review those, some highlights on those as well. We have about 16 slides for you this evening that we'll go through, and we asked departments, when considering proposed changes, to consider three focus areas. Changes related to the work program items, updates to project timing and costs for prior council approvals, as well as recognizing major changes in funding sources, all with the primary goal of continuing to deliver projects that are underway. Looking at the summary of the changes, proposed changes for the funded CIP, we're looking at roughly $29.5 million increase from the adopted. And then for the unfunded CIP, we're looking at a reduction of $333 million for the, from the adopted. And in the interest of time, I am going to share, as you see, the projects that have been proposed, but I am only going to highlight a couple, just to give the many projects in Public Works an opportunity to get reviewed. So for facilities, I wanted to highlight the City Hall Mobile Office Expansion. That's a new project being proposed, and it supports the Homelessness Early Action Plan, which is one of the city work programs. And then with parks, I wanted to highlight the Kamaiakon Gym Expansion, also a new project, new in that it is being proposed to move from the unfunded CIP list to the funded CIP, and also recognizing a grant of $515,000. The remaining $4.45 million would be unsecured external that staff and council are considering for other funding strategies on that.
Veronica, before you move forward, Councilwoman Falcone has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Veronica. I have a question about the Lake Washington School District Kamaiakon Gym Expansion. I know this is something that's not new to us, we've had discussions for quite some time about this project. My question is really the, the source of potential other funding strategies for this, and also, given the context of that we have other things that we're looking at to potentially prioritize within parks and within the city, such as winterizing the Peter Kirk Pool, right? How does this fit in the grand scheme of things? One, is my question about the funding for that. And then, two, when does the school district need to have a definitive yes or no for this? Because I feel like this is still something that should be up for discussion, again, contextually, thinking about some of the other things that we're going to have to prioritize. I understand the importance of this, and I understand the context around it, however, considering that there, we don't have, you know, money to do it all, right? We're going to need to prioritize, you know, as a city, what our community, the greatest community need is, and the best use of those funds. And then I, I guess, third question related to that is, can you just refresh our memories on the conversations we've had with the school district about this as well? Because this is a pretty significant investment that we'd be making into a school district facility that I know we'd have access into programming, but it's still something that my understanding is the entire delta in the funding for their standard-sized gym and the larger gym would be paid by the City of Kirkland, rather than it be a split between the school district and Kirkland. So I just want to refresh folks' memory on that as well.
Sure. Those are all the right questions. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and take this one. So, short answer is, I have three challenging things to figure out exactly how to balance, the Kamaiakon Gym being one of them, the Public Works Main and Center the other, and then the pool, potential options for either enclosing the pool or finding some other pool location. You know, we've talked about the idea of a goldfish-type facility, so. And we're looking at all of those things, and all of them would sort of compete in and around this space for real estate excise tax or impact fees, particularly park impact fees. So I have a little bit of work to do here. There's two reasons why we have this one moving to, to funded, but we don't yet have the final proposal for you, which we'd come to with next year. The first is that we did secure, thanks to the hard work of Legislative Work Group and our state legislators, who were awesome, that we got $515,000 direct grant from the state. So 10% of it, we're there, we're on the, we're on the way. The second thing is, the park levy did pass, the King County Park Levy did pass, which actually creates some grant programs for youth sports and youth facilities, so we have an opportunity to get some more of that money. The two policy issues with respect to the school district. The first is, we also have this prioritized because it's a current level of service we will lose when the Kamaiakon Gym comes down. Whereas the pool, while we have a huge backlog, the pool would be an additional service level that we'd be adding. So those are kind of the ways we're trying to think about those two things together. We have had, over the years, multiple conversations with the school district about including full funding of this in their future levies and current levies. The school district position, and we can talk to them about it again, is that their current programming, they do not, with maybe the exception of the high schools, they do not program adult-level gyms in their middle schools and elementary schools. And so what they say is that to do something like that is basically having the entire school district subsidize a higher level of service in one city. And so their position has been, if you want to build something bigger than what we would otherwise build, then the City of Kirkland will be responsible for that increment, and they've given us that estimate of $5 million. The final piece is, that's still just a plug number. It could go up, but it probably will go down a little bit, we hope. And I don't yet have the answers to, like, when do they need to know, but that's one of the things I've written out, and I will definitely be asking them, so. Hopefully, that gives kind of a high-level overview. But my goal is to have funding proposal for you as part of the next, next year, for the next six-year CIP, that balances all of these factors.
Councilwoman Pascal?
Thank you. So when you come back on this, I guess the other piece of information that would be helpful is, what programming would we lose?
Oh.
Specifically, just the amount and what it is, and whether or not that we would be able to relocate that anywhere else?
Okay.
Just kind of options for that?
Sure.
I think would be helpful in the decision-making related to that. And then also, the other thing would be, when we do enter into agreements with the school district, like where we fund something permanently like this, what contractual basis, you know, do we enter into to where we're assured that we get the benefits of the amount that we pay into it? I'm not familiar with that, I assume we do that, but I'd be curious.
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
All right. Veronica, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, at this time, I will hand it off to Jessica for coverage of the Public Works projects.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. I'll jump right into modified projects for transportation. We have Northeast 87th Street and 116th Ave intersection improvements. This, as you can see, as the... This, as you can see, as the pictures show, this is the project that will be adding a mini roundabout that will serve the pickup and drop-off area of the Stride Bus Rapid Transit Station near 85th and I-405. As a reminder, this is a federally funded project with $1.4 million for the construction phase in 2028. We are requesting to increase this funding by about $500,000 for a total updated funding of $2.6 million. When we did this application, it was prior to our setup PM role and was a very high-level estimate, and now that we have transitioned it to her to do a deeper dive on the project, we just have a refined scope and cost estimate at this new funding level. The next project, 98th and 100th Ave Bike and Pet Improvements. This is a TBD project funded at $320,000. Not requesting a change for this project in funding, but there is a change to the scope. You can see on the map to the right, there's the purple polka dot Northern Scope, as well as the blue diagonal striped Scope. We are proposing that we will complete the Southern Scope, which is to fill in a gap for the bike lane network that will do on-street bike lanes within the current width of that street. It will also modify and/or resize existing median islands and remove, replace, or restore lighting in that section only. After the project was set up, we learned that the northern half is simply not the same project that we identified for the TBD. It includes widening the road, right-of-way components, and considerations with external utilities, excuse me, and due to the scale and cost, we believe it should be a standalone project that we'll bring back to council at a later time. The last modified project is Northeast 68th Street Pet and Bike Safety Project. This project includes several improvements in RRFB, bike lanes, radar signs, lighting, and crosswalks. This is another instance where this is an older project with grant funding. It's $500,000 of federal funds, and we supplemented with $50,000 of local funds to cover ineligible. Fast forward to now, we're at about 60% design, and we are anticipating an almost $400,000 shortfall. So we have programmed that in, funding this need coming from available balances in other projects in order to continue with the project. A couple new projects: 84th Avenue Northeast Bike-Walk Roll Improvements. This came from direction from council at the February 4th council meeting. This would be a feasibility study to explore traffic calming, protected bike lanes, and other potential roadway redesign elements. We are proposing to fund this also from street levy funding from other, a surplus balance in another project. It's estimated at approximately $75,000. The second new project is Goat Hill Wall Safety Improvement. This is for construction of a retaining wall. This is outside of the current Goat Hill project that is wrapping up right now. This is our high-level planning estimate of about $300,000. We would like to do a deeper dive on the scope and budget of this project and bring a more refined estimate to council at the November 5th study session. For our transportation unfunded list, we are bringing before council a proposed restructuring. As council is aware, last year for the 25 to 30 CIP development, it was happening along the same timeline as the Transportation Strategic Plan. We knew that with the update, we would need to come back and get these lists in better alignment with each other. Some key features of this revised list, it reflects the TSP's 20-year fiscally constrained project list. We also included an area for high-priority maintenance projects identified by our team as well as the maintenance staff. And we also wanted to incorporate a section for initiatives directed by city council and by city manager. Our teams, CIP and Transportation Engineering, we did do a crosswalk to compare the old list with the TSP to ensure that we have all of the projects accounted for. The majority of the projects are included in the TSP. There was a small handful that we removed due to completion with another project or scope redundancy. We would recommend that we reference that much greater list of projects within the TSP for residents to see the full unfunded project list in the hopper. If this was, council supports this new format, we could come back in November 5th and show you a more detailed list of the crosswalk and specifically which projects were removed.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor has a question.
I think you've anticipated, Jessica. I would like to see that comparison, because one of the things that has been interesting about the unfunded CIP is it gives us a flavor of future work compared to anticipated revenue. And we've always had, outside of some big projects like the Cross Kirkland Corridor that requires some external funding, we've always been able to say, okay, within four or five CIP cycles, that's enough revenue to cover everything on the list, to be able to say, okay, over a period of 20 or 30 years, we're able to accomplish all this. If there's things that are being pulled, so having that visibility is important, if there's things being pulled from that CIP list, it's something that I'm interested in reviewing, whether it's at this council meeting in November that you talk about or offline. Secondly, has the Transportation Commission seen that full crosswalk?
No, they have not.
That may be also something to consider. We rely on our commissions to do that kind of detail work, and it might be useful to see if they have any recommendations as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one new unfunded project, the Central Way Bike Lane Improvement Project. This has come as a standalone item before council. This is widening the sidewalk and adding a protected bike lane along Central Way. This is a joint project that we would do in coordination with parks and their planned tree removal along Lee Johnson Field. This project is estimated at $2.6 million. This past August, we did submit Transportation Improvement Board application for $1.5 million. We typically hear back on that competition late November, early December, so hopefully we can bring the outcome of that before the adoption in December. I added some information on this project based on other conversations that are happening, the 98th Ave Northeast and Winnita Drive, Northeast 116th intersection improvements. So this is on the proposed new unfunded transportation list as TSP Project 2234. I'm noting that the funding level given in the TSP is very high-level and would be subject to change pending further evaluation. There are different options, but staff would recommend doing a feasibility study to evaluate those options, including a roundabout, the feasibility and implications of widening for additional northbound turn lane onto Winnita Drive. Those considerations could include right-of-way, the buildings on either side, and the fact that the Winnita Bay wetland is on the western side of the road, in addition to utility conflicts. We could also look at an option to evaluate extending the second westbound receiving lane on 97th, so that it would extend all the way to the, where the spuds is located on 97th, and give traffic a longer opportunity to merge over into the other lane.
Thank you. You'll have questions. Councilwoman Falcon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you, Jessica. I have a question about, this is something that I know that I've raised about potentially in the future installing a roundabout here, and I was reminded in the speed limit memo that we're going to be discussing later, in answer to one of my questions in that memo, was a reference to TSP policy that we have for intersections, that any new intersections or intersections with a major intersection improvement, the default would be a roundabout. And so I'm just wondering, the language here, that we're evaluating the feasibility of a roundabout, really according to our policy in the TSP, the default would be, in my understanding, a roundabout, but that's based on my interpretation of the definition of major intersection improvements. And if we're considering adding turn lanes, in my mind, that would be a major intersection improvement that we're considering. And so I'd be interested in, you know, hearing from staff at some point what our definition of major intersection improvement is, because this is relevant not only here to other places throughout the city, but I just want to make sure that we're defining that clearly for everybody's, so everybody's on the same page with what a major intersection improvement is, and that if my interpretation is correct, that adding turn lanes would be considered, that we really take a look at what we're doing here, and really the default would be a roundabout, unless it's deemed to be infusable in some way. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. Councilwoman Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I was wondering what the next slide was going to be. And once I saw what the next slide was going to be, I realized I need to make my comment here. So I appreciate highlighting the intersection improvements here. I think there's a couple other intersections that are on the unfunded list that I'd just highlight that are similar, similar to this. One is at 100th and 132nd, where we're talking about, at the, you know, the development at the Goodwill site. Another one, we haven't talked about tonight, but we've talked about in the past, is at 68th and 108th, where we could see future development at the Houghton Village site. I would just highlight those three projects that are on the unfunded list as projects I would like us, you know, I'd be interested in, at some point, when the time is right, having discussion with staff proposals about how to move those on, at least the analysis of those, onto the funded list. So just wanted to make that comment, and I think that was probably the most appropriate place to make it, so that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the transportation section, so I'll move on to surface water. Two projects to update council on. There's a lot of moving pieces with these two, a lot of conversations happening, so I'll present what we have presented to you from the memo, knowing that this could change. So for the Houghton Park and Ride Stormwater Facility, this is an existing project. This is shifting from a Kraken-built facility to a city-built facility. This is to mitigate the remaining portion of the site to meet current stormwater requirements for potential redevelopment. Let's see. The design estimate is approximately $186,000. This is a figure given to us from when the Kraken were going to build it. We are proposing to move this into 2025 with local funding so that we can begin design immediately, and then the remainder of the funding is 7.3 million that's programmed as debt in 2026. The second project is new. This is Houghton Park and Ride Stormwater retrofit facility. This would provide water quality and flow control retrofit facilities for stormwater flows upstream of the site. This is budgeted at 3.7 million is unsecured external, and this is because of a pending forgivable loan that we're negotiating with Department of Ecology. Staff is currently under contract negotiations, and just want to note that this is federal funding, so we would have all the federal considerations, including BABA, et cetera. There is also other potential options that staff are researching right now, including the possibility of combining these two vaults and potential locations on the site that may work better and best aligned with the city's goals and the Kraken construction schedule. I anticipate this is one that we'll have a lot more information for you at the November 5th study session. And lastly, water sewer. We have a couple new projects, the 105th Avenue Northeast Sewer Line Repair. This is something that came to our attention from our maintenance crew. It's a failing sewer pipe. This is funded at $175,000 using surplus funds from the Northeast 73rd Water Main Project. Black 172, this is Kirkland Way Water Main Connection. This was an opportunity for us to make a water main connection before a TBD project in the area comes in and puts sidewalk over the area. This is funded at $75,000, again, using surplus funds from that same project. And then one change to highlight from the external funding regarding the South Reservoir Replacement. In the 2530 CIP, last year, we really focused on refining the overall cost of the reservoir replacement and Kirkland's portion of that. With the update, we want to recognize Bellevue and Redmond's contributions, which is based on a percentage of shared ownership of the facility. We're adding an additional $12.4 million, based on current cost estimates, bringing our overall total funding to just over $38 million, with Kirkland's share at about 23 and Bellevue and Redmond at 15.4. A quick update on the Highlands Water Pressure Update. Last March, we upgraded the Highlands Water System by opening nine new connections. Last November, council allocated about $400,000 to help Highland residents affected by the lower water pressure after the upgrades. This past June, the city launched a rebate program with three assistance options, including a booster pump installation with a rebate up to $14,000. This coming second quarter of 2026, with the Water System Plan Update, staff will evaluate long-term pressure fixes, and staff will bring options for council consideration in the 2732 CIP next year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pascal?
Thank you. So I know that many of us have received a lot of communication over the past year about this issue, and a couple of things that, you know, I've heard from community members and just been thinking about related to this is, one is, one of the arguments is that this was, the water pressure issue is something that the city created through the project that occurred, and so therefore shouldn't fixing it be kind of, continue that project to fix it, rather than kind of push it off to 2027 or 2028, or whatever that future year is on the study? So is there an option to kind of fast-track potential options to fix it beyond the rebate program, I guess, would be the first question? And should, and is, and if there is, then, you know, I'd like consideration of that in the CIP, but I don't know that we know the answer to that. That'd be something I'd be interested in hearing back next time. The second is, if there is a potential fix, but we have this rebate program going, then are we kind of double-dipping, so to speak? We're paying for individual fixes, but then we're going to come back and fix it overall? Is there a way to kind of be more efficient with that money? I know these are all complicated questions, so I'm not expecting an answer right now, but the thing's on my mind. And then if, I have been getting a lot of questions about the structure of the rebate program, and if I have questions about the structure and the legal requirements that we're asking residents to sign, are those executive session discussions, or are those discussions we can have?
I would recommend that we go into executive session if you'd like to discuss some of those, the legal requirements for the agreement and why it was developed the way that it was.
Thank you.
I can't just say on the record, the reason we did the rebate program is we know that any solution is likely to take several years at least. The big issue is, because of all the new things that we opened up, all the new connections, figuring out if we're going to do a new reestablishment of a higher pressure, what those products are and where they're located is the challenge. It might, could be in different places, and it could be several million dollars. We just don't really know yet. So we wanted to get immediate fixes to the residents who had immediate water pressure problems, knowing it could be quite a while. The goal of the look as part of the Water Conference of Plan is to have options for the council, and those options to include, how fast could you do something? So we'll definitely be coming back with that information, but we didn't want people to be waiting through multiple cycles of the seasons in the meantime.
Thanks for that. Yeah, so I guess I go back to my first comment is, are there ways to bring the options back sooner than quarter two of 2026 for funding?
Yeah.
We'll definitely look at that.
Jessica, back to you. And are we close?
My last slide.
Yeah.
So I'm sure council has been aware that we have been implementing a project management software. We've seen a lot of growth in our capital program over the past decade, which led to an assessment in 2021, and one of the very last things that was proposed that we implement is a project management software. software. So we're excited to bring this update to you. We selected a tool called PM Web and we've been working hard over the past year with much support from IT, building and implementing this new project for our team. The goal, some of the goals from PM Web is it gives us end-to-end visibility on each of our projects, especially when it comes to changes, documentation, and reporting out. The goal is better transparency with our scope, schedule, and budget throughout the lifecycle of our projects. I put this picture here. This was half of our team last week. Our vendor flew in in person and we did three full days of training and got the first half of our PMs in the system looking at their projects. So it's a really exciting milestone for us to share. It's a long time coming. We are on track to have all of our project managers fully onboarded by the end of this year and we'll bring further updates to council as that progresses. And then we will open it up for council discussion and direction.
Thank you. Council, any other comments you want to add before we adjourn? What's it look like? Oh, Councilwoman Black.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have one, I did want to see clarification on one thing. It has to do with the Highlands Water Pressure. We could go back to that slide because it's the wording that I want to, I don't want to, I'm not trying to parse wording, but the Water Comprehensive Plan anticipated to be complete and will identify potential adjustments to the pressure gradient. Are we going to have a sense, I'm guessing there are going to be multiple options? Are we going to have a sense in that, in the timeframe that's described here, the likelihood of success for each option that we're presented with? Do we have any sense of that? Or are we just going to, or are we going to receive, hey, here are three options and we still have to do further evaluation to determine whether any of these options will actually change the gradient or the affected properties?
Well, the short answer is the options we look at would be with the intent of restoring the pressure. So you basically get a sense of what it would do and why it would do it, otherwise wouldn't do it. Yeah, but.
Okay. So the options will be presented with, all will.
Be designed to increase the pressure.
Increase the pressure.
Options whether or not you.
And we'll probably also have some sense of what the trade-offs are because there will, it's a system, and so we're going to have some trade-offs.
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, guys. We appreciate it. We are concluding our study session for this evening. We'll be back at 7:30 for our regular meeting.
We are back in session following a briefing on the Juanita Business District, a North Juanita Center zoning code amendments, and a preliminary update on the 2025-2020, or 2030 Capital Improvement Program. I'm going to start this evening on a somber note. Before continuing our meeting, I'd like to share a brief statement regarding a tragic incident that occurred this weekend. As many of you have heard, Kirkland lost a beloved community leader, Sheila Stanton, in a car crash at the grocery outlet in Bridle Trails on Sunday. Sheila was well-known in our community and beyond for her tireless service and generosity. She was an active member of St. John's Episcopal Church, where she directed the community dinner that provided hot meals to those in need. She also helped organize Kirkland's Juneteenth Proclamations, or Celebrations, and was the recipient of the city's first Juneteenth proclamation in 2023. A longtime Kirkland resident and a member of the Kirkland Eagles, Sheila's impact stretched across the city and the state. She served on the Washington State Commission on African-American Affairs, helping to advance policies and programs that support equity and justice. Sheila was also a close collaborator and friend to the city. She participated in the Welcoming Kirkland Initiative in 2019 and 2020, work that helped lay the foundation for our DEIB five-year roadmap. In that way, her legacy of building belonging continues to shape Kirkland today. On behalf of the city, I extend our deepest condolences to Sheila's family, friends, and all who were touched by her remarkable life of service. And in closing, I'd like to take a moment of silence to honor Sheila. Now, regarding our agenda, unless there is an objection, we're going to hold an executive session to discuss potential litigation under placeholder item 11. Seeing no objection, we will now move on to tonight's agenda, starting with our honors and proclamations. And tonight, we will begin with recognition of two local Girl Scouts, Emma Henry and Kalen Ching from Girl Scout Troop, oop, need my glasses for that, 41658. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So just before we introduce the Girl Scouts, John Lloyd, the Deputy Director of Parks and Community Services, has a brief presentation of their accomplishment that they're being nominated for tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Triplet, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, fellow City Council members. As has been stated, we're here tonight to recognize two local Girl Scouts, Emma Henry and Kalen Chang, who have fundraised nearly $1,600 to give to the city to put towards our AED program out in the parks. So as a little bit of a context for you all and for the folks watching at home, we've been working on installing AEDs out in our park system for the last two years. In 2023, when 132nd Square Park was nearly completed, you asked us to kind of evaluate the possibility of putting AEDs out there and basically told us we had to have one in 132nd, or it wouldn't be considered done. After a successful pilot at 132nd, City Council authorized funding to place 16 AEDs throughout the community at our heavily-used parks and those with sports courts and fields. Last fall, we also received a donation from the DP Foundation for the AED at Crestwoods, which allowed us to expand our program even further. And that's actually how I was connected with Emma and Kalen here, is they connected back with us. The first phase of AEDs was installed last year. We got the first, so we had a dozen installed by the end of last year. We're getting ready to install our second phase of AEDs, and I actually just discovered and learned the DP Foundation is actually going to be donating another AED to us, to bring us to a total of 19 AEDs installed in our parks before the end of the year. Back to why we're here tonight, for Emma and Kalen. Earlier this year, as I've mentioned, I was contacted by folks from the DP Foundation making the virtual introduction of these two young ladies, who were looking to promote AEDs in the community and had started fundraising and wanted to know what they could do to help. This is all in an effort towards their Silver Award. And like I said, they have fundraised nearly $1,600, which covers the cost of an AED, which will be installed at Van Alst Park later this fall. In addition to helping fundraise and promote this here tonight, the two girls are going to be joining us at City Hall for All next weekend and going to be doing a bunch of activities to promote CPR and AED use and everything along those lines. So with that, I'd like to just convey my thanks and appreciation to Kalen and Emma for their efforts, and I'll turn it over to them to let them say a few words and to, yeah, say thanks.
Welcome.
I'm Kalen, and we would like to thank everyone who has contributed towards this moment, more specifically, everyone who has bought cookies from us this year. We sold 680 boxes.
We would like to thank our service unit, who provided lots of interesting items for our garage sale, as well as Caroline M. for helping lead first aid and AED classes, Laura M., who gave us an AED and CPR demonstration kit to help show the public, and getting us in contact with Adam. We would like to thank Adam L. for helping us figure out what costs would be like and answering our questions, as well as getting us in contact with John, who helped us get where we are now. Thank you for listening.
So, yeah, let's give them a big round. I don't think they were planning on having quite the audience this evening. So, thank you both for your work on this, you taking the initiative, you are truly helping save lives. So I'm really proud of you for seeing a need in our community and stepping up to help out. So you are the future leaders. Someday you may be up here, someday you may be our future police chief. So thank you so much for doing this. And if you'd like, come on up and we will take a group picture. We're disagreeing.
Do it my way, I'm older.
Good job, ladies. Congratulations. All right, we're not done. We have one more special moment. Put my glasses on for this one, in case I cry. We also have the privilege to celebrate another honor this evening. We have the honor of recognizing a leader whose service to our community has been nothing short of extraordinary. Police Chief Sherri Harris will be retiring after nine years as Kirkland's Chief of Police. During her tenure, she has guided our police department with integrity, professionalism, and a deep commitment to building trust between the department, the council, and our community. Tonight is Chief Harris's last night, serving the Kirkland community as its Chief of Police. Tonight, this council will bestow upon Chief Harris the City Council's Outstanding Service Award, also known as the Council Coin. This award is reserved for individuals who have gone above and beyond the expectations of their role in delivering exceptional service to this selected body, the Kirkland City Council. It is not an award given lightly. This award honors those who through extraordinary length of service or acts of truly exceptional leadership have strengthened the council's ability to serve our community. Chief Harris embodies these qualities. Her leadership not only advanced accreditation for the department and strengthened our regional public safety partnerships, Chief Harris's leadership also gave this council the confidence and assurance that Kirkland's residents were well-protected and well-served. Chief Harris has consistently gone beyond the expected duties of her office to provide the council with her time, her expertise, and her clear-eyed counsel in some of the most important decisions we have faced together. One potent example of this would be, I would like to uplift, is Chief Harris's leadership during some of the most tumultuous times in our country's recent history, the racial reckonings of the early 2020s. At a time when it was so easy to oversimplify the intertwined historical issues of societal racism and law enforcement, Chief Harris simultaneously provided nuanced guidance to this council and stalwart leadership to the department. Not only is this an incredible example of servant leadership during truly challenging times, but is my belief, and a belief I'm sure is shared amongst my colleagues on the council, that Chief Harris's leadership through that time helped Kirkland become a safer, more connected, and more place, a more belonging place for all people. In a moment, it will be my profound privilege to present Chief Harris with the City Council's Outstanding Service Award in gratitude of her extraordinary service to this council and to the people of Kirkland. Before I do, I would like to entertain a motion to add an additional item to our agenda under honors and proclamations, to bestow the Council Coin to Chief Harris on behalf of the entire council, and to suspend our Rule 10.02 procedure requiring a council meeting between when she is nominated and when she is granted the award.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved by Councilmember Black, second by Councilmember Sweet. To amend, sorry, a little emotional, to amend our council rule, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. With that out of the way, would any of my colleagues like to provide remarks regarding Chief Harris? Councilmember Sweet.
Sherri, I am personally so happy, and I'm going to cry too, but for you to be taking this time, or taking retirement at this time, I think that everyone should make that career decision as early as possible. I retired 19 years ago, after 36 years in healthcare, and I've been able to find completely different path. I hope that you and Bill will find the right path for the two of you, and that you really enjoy your next chapter. As I look back on your short time with Kirkland, I see so very much change and always change for the good. We've been an incredibly busy city with an incredible PD. I have always been a huge supporter of our police department, and in my 40-year history with the city, it has done nothing but grown in every good way. Your tenure started just two years into my first term on the council, and it was so inspiring to have a female officer of your caliber join us in a leadership position. So when you were appointed chief in 2016, I was absolutely thrilled, and I have been ever since. You are an inspiration to your officers and an incredible example to your female officers and to female leadership throughout this organization. This department has continued to learn and grow through COVID, the threats of civil unrest during Black Lives Matters, how we handled, just how we have learned to weigh into our relationship with behavioral health. You've changed the department in ways that are remarkable and make us so incredibly proud. All I want to say is thank you, and I wish you every exciting, wonderful, wonderful step in your next step. Thank you, Sherri.
Chief, you're going to be standing there for a little while. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't fully prepared, and there's no way I'm going to get through this. No way. But I'm going to do my very best to do it without getting emotional. I wanted to-
Chief, you're gonna be standing there for a little while. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't fully prepared. And there's no way I'm gonna get through this. No way. But I'm gonna do my very best to do it without getting emotional. I wanted to highlight, sort of, there's many things we could highlight about your service to, see, to Kirkland, to the community, to the city, and to your officers. You know, they could go on and on. But I wanted to highlight four things. One, that I've keenly observed is you're creating a culture of professionalism in your department, and also customer service, and I mean service to the community, and really a customer service approach to, to law enforcement and public safety in the city of Kirkland. Your willingness to, within your department, to, and I think this is a signal of incredible strength and leadership, is to couple high expectations with corresponding accountability. And I think you've done an amazing job of that in your department. I also really appreciate, number three, I really appreciate your openness to innovations and first response. There have been a lot of conversations over the last six years about innovations and first response, and at every turn, you have had an open, haven't had an openness to how to implement new response, new first response into the work that we do in public safety. And then the last thing I want to highlight was the, to the public, is just the extent to which Chief Harris, through her tenure, has developed a high degree of respect among elected officials and other law enforcement officers. So, that's both elected and those serving in law enforcement, just a high degree of respect for you and your opinion, and your ideas, and your willingness to collaborate. And that includes actively engaging with, with the city council and the city leadership, with legislative initiatives at the state level. And you've become really a leader in that regard. And the last thing I'll say that was really impressed me in that regard is a willingness to be sort of proactively proposing innovations in improved public safety that ensure the dignity and respect of those that come into contact with the justice system. And when a lot of, when folks come into contact with the justice system, it's usually at one of the worst moments in their life. And you've always understood that, respected that. And the fact that you have proactively proposed innovations and improvements at the state level that would ensure the dignity and respect for those who come into contact with the justice system is real testament to the type of officer that you are. And I'll thank you. And thank you, everyone, for allowing me to struggle through that.
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you, Chief Harris. You know, one of the biggest compliments I got on your police force was actually last month in August. We were actually having to contact our local grocery stores, QFCs and Fred Meyers, and ask them if they planned on closing any locations because they've closed locations in our neighboring cities. And the staff there said that they plan on leaving their grocery stores open here in Kirkland. And the number one reason, they noted, was their relationship with Kirkland Police and their responsiveness. And they talked about how, what an incredible relationship they have with Kirkland Police. And they also talked about their mediocre relationship with surrounding cities, which I thought was interesting because your relation, you know, a lot of people don't see this, but your relationship with simple things like our grocery stores and retailers has kept grocery stores open for the people of Kirkland while other cities struggle. Thank you for your dedication to our community. And the relationship that your officers have with the community improves the lives of our residents in ways that we can't always see. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Chief Harris, this is a bittersweet moment. Like Councilmember Sweet said, we're very happy for you. We also are very proud of all of your work over the years in the city of Kirkland, and we're gonna miss you. I'm really proud of and inspired by your leadership. You consistently lead with strength and grace, and that's not an easy balance to strike. You've navigated, I've seen you navigate some really challenging situations, always focusing on building the trust of your staff, the city, and the community. And that can be, you know, from disasters, emergency situations, to really tough policy discussions as a city. In all of those challenging situations, you are level-headed and bring a very mindful, thoughtful leadership to those discussions. You've, as some of my colleagues have mentioned, you've been a leader not just in the city of Kirkland, but regionally and statewide, and I would argue also nationwide on a lot of the work that we've collaborated on. I really appreciate that your approach is always that we are people first. In a time in our country and our community where there's so much division, really seeing each other as people first is so important to bringing folks together. And you're very keenly aware of that in your position as our police chief, and you led by example for our community. So, thank you for that. An example of that is, you know, your leadership, as Councilmember Black mentioned, with state legislation on things such as respecting folks' gender preference for, for searching in our jails, right? And wanting that to be not just true for folks as they encounter the justice system in Kirkland, but statewide. And that's true leadership, to really care, specifically coming from law enforcement community. To lead that effort is something that, that we could use more of in our, in our communities across the country. So, thank you for that. You know, you've been a leader in these tough conversations, whether it be on legislation or on crisis response, or on facial recognition technology and all the other, you know, conversations we've had over the years. And I remember when I was brand-new to city council, you and I going out to lunch, I think we shared some burgers and salads over in Totum Lake, and first and foremost, wanted to start off by people first, right? Getting to know each other as people and as leaders together so that we could collaborate on things. And I've always appreciated that and the start to our working relationship there. You know, I think it's very fitting, as the mayor alluded to earlier, that we had the Girl Scouts, Emma and Kalen, here tonight. Because, you know, I, it's, it's a really big deal in your leadership that you are such a strong leader, and you are such an inspiration and role model to girls in our community, being a woman police chief. That needs to be recognized and appreciated. I remember the first time that I met you was at, here at City Hall, several years ago, your brand-new title of police chief. But I didn't know that of you at the time. And I remember, I brought my daughter with me, my daughter Sophie, and she was, gosh, probably four or five years old at the time. And it was for the State of the City address. So, we had the mayor and the city manager, and I didn't know that you were there because I didn't know who our police chief was at that time. And my daughter asked a question of the mayor after the State of the City address and asked, you know, tell me more about, you know, how many women police officers do we have? And how many women firefighters do we have? I want to see more, you know, women in our, in our first response departments. And I remember, city manager, then, you know, sharing with my daughter and I at the time, that, you know, actually, our new police chief is a woman, and introducing you to Sophia. And you took time to speak with her and to take pictures with her and to talk to her about your career in law enforcement. And that's really stuck with her, and that's really stuck with me. And I think it's, it's just, you may not know all of the lives that you've touched, not only in being a law enforcement officer, but just being such a strong leader to, and inspiration to girls in the community that you may never hear from. But I can say that that certainly was true for my family, for my daughter and my, my girl. So, and she was just blown away that we had a woman police chief, because that's not what she had seen on, you know, TV and the movies. So, thank you for that. Thank you for that inspiration at such a young age that she had that image in her mind now of what she could be if she chose to be when she's older. And, you know, for these and many, many, many reasons, you will be missed. I will miss you. The community will miss you. The city council will miss you. You know, they're, you have some, they're leaving some big shoes to fill. And we, I will just say that we need more law enforcement officers and police chiefs like you in our communities throughout our country. So, thank you for setting that example and for spreading that example to other communities outside of Kirkland as well.
Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Harris, for always serving with purpose and thoughtfulness. And believe it or not, you are one of the few constants during my time on council, and it's been great having you as chief and, you know, you tackling some of those really tough challenges that the mayor described. One of the things I look back on is how you presided over the biannual police awards and promotion ceremony. And it was, what really kind of struck me was how you were always good at balancing your, what appeared to be a little bit of nervousness humor, though, and, and then at times, very seriousness, right? And, and then you would always celebrate your fellow Wazoo grads with the Go Cougs, and that was kind of just to jab at us fellow Husky grads. So, and I know that that tradition will probably continue on with Chief St. Jean, unfortunately. But thank you for commanding the respect of our officers, our community, and all you've done. Wish you the best.
Oh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for all of your service to the community. There are two things that you've emphasized throughout your tenure that I carry with me and will always remember. One is that law enforcement is a calling, and our officers were called to serve and act as guardians in our community. And how much you personally recognize the and honor the trust that the Kirkland community has put in you and the department. And, and that, that came through in every award and promotion ceremony, your remarks at Peace Officers Memorial Day, in community events, as you, you talked to the community. In particular, one that you and I attended together at the Amon Center, which just demonstrated your commitment and, and built a community and, and trust. We are so fortunate that you were called to service and to serve in Kirkland as police chief. We're gonna miss you, Chief. Thanks, Sherri.
Okay, let's give her a round of applause, and then we're gonna calm down. So, Chief, if you want to join us, and if your officers would like to come forward too, that would be wonderful. Y'all didn't dress up for nothing. Oh, are they? So, if anybody runs out of the room, don't, don't worry. Do you have family here tonight?
I do.
Let's bring them up.
So, my husband, Bill, is here. My mom, Cheryl, is here. They didn't think they were gonna have to come up here, but I'll just give a shout out, my mom, my husband, Bill, my mom, Cheryl, my dad, Tim, my dad, Tim, and my Connie.
All right.
We like you guys.
All right, there we go. All right, commending Chief Sherri Harris for her outstanding service as Kirkland's Chief of Police. Whereas, more than three decades in law enforcement and over nine years as Kirkland's Police Chief of Police, Sherri Harris has announced her retirement effective September 3, 2025, concluding a distinguished career defined by integrity, dedication, and service. Whereas, Chief Harris' career began in 1993 at the Washington State University Police Department, Go Cougs, and prog, and I'm a Husky also, and progressed through many roles in the Monroe Police Department, where she served with distinction as a police officer, a narcotics detective, a field training officer, a sergeant operations commander, and deputy chief, before joining Kirkland in 2012 and rising through the ranks to become Chief of Police in 2016. Whereas, Chief Harris has exemplified a career of continuous improvement through, by graduating from the FBI National Academy, the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Seminar, and Northwest, Northwestern University's School of Police Staff and Command. Whereas, under her visionary leadership, the Kirkland Police Department expanded to 159 dedicated personnel, including commissioned officers, professional staff, and the team entrusted with operating the city's 72-bed misdemeanor corrections facility. And whereas, Chief Harris has extended her leadership beyond Kirkland, serving as the president of the Washington Chapter of the FBI National Academy Alumni Association, co-chair of the Washington Association of Sheriff and Police Chiefs Corrections Committee, member of the WASPC Accreditation Commission, and voting representative to the King County Emergency Management Committee. And whereas, Chief Harris has exemplified the highest ideals of public safety, strengthening community trusts, and advancing professional accreditation, and sharing her expertise to shape state and regional law enforcement initiatives. And whereas, Chief Harris will leave an indelible remark, mark on Kirkland, and will leave a legacy of our community being safer, stronger, and more connected because of her stalwart commitment to law enforcement. Now, therefore, the City of Council, of the city of Kirkland, does hereby commend and honor Chief Sherri Harris for her extraordinary service, her unwavering commitment to justice, and her enduring contributions to the safety and well-being of the Kirkland community. And extends to her, and extends to her, our deepest gratitude, respect, and best wishes for a well-earned retirement.
I have some prepared remarks for tomorrow. I did not prepare remarks for tonight. I might not have known exactly the extent of what was happening. But I will say that the people that you saw in uniform that were in this room tonight, they'll work into the middle of the night while we go home and go to sleep. And again, they will, they will run towards danger while everybody else is running away. And then they will go from that call, and they will help somebody in crisis, and they will partner with a mental health professional. And I want to thank all of you for the tools that we have, for the support, the RACER programs. I did think a couple times I should have brought some innovative programs to pitch tonight. It sounded like you're pretty open to some new ideas. But I have full trust in this, this team, the leadership team. I am retiring because the department is in a good place. And they're gonna continue to do good work and take care of this community. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you all, and I'm so glad you're here for that special moment. All right, this is our time in our meeting when we normally hear from the public. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. We will provide up to a total of 45 minutes for the items from the audience with more, no more than six speakers on a subject regardless of their position on the subject. If you would like to address the council during items for the audience period, please sign up using the online public comment extraction link or the posted QR code in chambers. For those participating by phone, please dial *9 to be recognized to speak. Items from the audience is an important part of our business meeting, and we ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect. We ask that you please do not clap or applaud, or otherwise openly express your agreement or disagreement with a speaker. When that happens, even when being openly supportive of a speaker, it can be disruptive of the meeting and discourage others from sharing a different point of view. We discourage people from using obscenities and making personal attacks against others. And we ask that you direct your comments to council, not to staff or audience members. In addition, because they can be disruptive, signs and placards are not allowed in council chambers during our meetings regardless of their content. As a reminder, state law does not allow items from the audience to be used for promoting, opposing, or discussing a candidate's campaign or ballot proposition. Kirkland prides itself on being a respectful, welcoming community. We want everyone to feel like they belong in council chambers, expressing their viewpoints. Thank you, everyone. City Clerk, who do we have signed up?
Our first three speakers are Matt Larson, John Sambrook, and Kyle Sullivan.
Matt, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Matt Larson, Local Government Affairs with Puget Sound Energy, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to address concerns, and I'm sure you have all heard about some of the work that Puget Sound Energy is doing around the Houghton Substation. Unfortunately, this is work that was unavoidable. New safety measures require PSC to trench within the critical root zone around the perimeter of the substation, compromising the structure and integrity of the trees, so they had to be removed. Basically, we needed to restore the proper ground to the perimeter fence and some upgraded equipment that we're going to be doing there as well. And these previous tall trees, even before being compromised, have become increasingly incompatible with the site since falling and sometimes flying branches in the wind threaten the substation and surrounding homes. In fact, many of you may recall receiving complaints from homeowners immediately adjacent to the site about that possibly a danger to their homes. Recently, several weeks ago, we did send out notice to all the homeowners immediately adjacent to the substation site and those across the street. However, in hindsight, we realize it would have been helpful if we'd probably broaden the area of the neighborhood to send those notifications out. To rectify that, we're going to be putting some A-Board signs out on the site with some informational flyers on that for local residents. I think there's been a lot of curiosity about just what will occur in terms of restoring a vegetative screening around the site once the work is complete and how it's going to be restored. Fifty-eight compatible trees will be planted along, around the substation perimeter. Fifty-two of those trees, or evergreen trees, are considered fast-growing, some up to two feet a year. These include 36 Spartan juniper and 15 Veriskins Western Red Cedar trees. In addition to that, we'll be planting 300 full and thickly branched native shrubs and ferns, and in addition to that, native ground cover will be placed in place of the current invasive English ivy. There were also a complaint we heard about after the trees removed, about some light glare from the site, and I just wanted to let the council know that the offending light has been removed. There are two lights remaining on the site, however, they're required to stay there, but as I understand, and it was described to me by our team, they're fully shielded and very, very little light pollution leaves the site itself. So, with that, I will be, for anybody, any member of the public that wants to comment on this, once they're done with this topic, I'll be available in the lobby if they want to address that or talk to me further. So, again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, appreciate it. John Sambrook?
Good evening. My name is John Sambrook. I live in Kirkland. I've been an engineer for 42 years. Much of that time was invested in building medical equipment, including ultrasound systems and defibrillators, so it's good to hear that Kirkland will have more defibrillators available. I've run my own small business since 1996. What can I say? I love solving puzzles, and complex systems are the biggest puzzles of all. Here's one thing I've learned: Every complex system has a rate-limiting step within it. That one step governs the pace of the whole system. If we focus on keeping that process in good order and running well, the system performs better. If we neglect that process, the performance of the system inevitably deteriorates. We can use traffic as an example. The rate-limiting process might be a set of curves that force vehicles to have to slow down. However, if that section is kept clear, everyone gets home faster. When it's clogged, the entire freeway or roadway may lock up. Cities work the same way. A city has many product lines, so to speak. Zoning, public safety, parks, utilities, transportation. Citizens want different things, and they're often pulling in different directions. Staff works hard, and departments are generally efficient. Yet, the city as a whole, its performance is always governed by that one rate-limiting process. What determines performance isn't maximizing effort or squeezing cost everywhere. It's clarity of focus. When leaders and teams protect, and support, and enhance the rate-limiting process, the performance of the city improves as well. So, the idea that I want to leave with you is this: Success comes from identifying and supporting and improving that one rate-limiting process that governs the pace of the whole system. Keep that process flowing, and the community benefits with faster results, lower costs, and better outcomes. My name is John Sambrook. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, John. Kyle Sullivan?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you, Mayor, for the words on Sheila Stanton. That's the reason why I'm here. I didn't know Sheila, but this crash happened, you know, half a mile from my house, so it's a really visceral reminder of something that's just sort of bubbling in the background because, you know, all around us, there are these life-changing crashes that happen for so many people. If you make the mistake of subscribing to wash dot crash emails, you're going to get emails every day. If you look at bigger jurisdictions, just because, you know, it's a matter of population in some regards, you know, like Seattle Police Department, there's stuff going on all the time on cities in the east side, there's crashes going on all the time. You know, just last Friday, there was a collision between a car and a pedestrian along MLK Way in Seattle, and I wouldn't have even heard about it, just I happened to, you know, be at work on the radio hearing about how they had to single-track operations in that area. You know, there wasn't even a light rail train involved, but so left turn, car hit a pedestrian, and they came to rest on a track, and they died on the scene. And so, that's just, it's kind of all around us. And so, you know, beyond just how much of a, it's clear how much of a pillar of the community Sheila was, what makes it even more devastating, just it seems how preventable this crash would have been. You know, it's, it was right at the entrance to the grocery store, so that's the type of area where just simple bollards would have prevented the crash from hitting other pedestrians. And it just highlights how important the city's Vision Zero commitment is. You know, by having a Vision Zero target of 2035, the City of Kirkland is acknowledging that one life lost is too many. And so, I hope that you continue to take action for this. And I know in the previous Vision Zero data the city has already, you know, while it's outside of city right of way, there are other serious crashes that have happened in parking lots. So, I think this is a serious area the city needs to look at, and again, it's not, you know, directly within your control, but looking into having new developments, be required to have these bollards or space for them, and finding ways to retrofit it, you know, because there's a similar problem in Redmond where it's, it's a shoplifting problem there, where cars keep crashing into a store right in downtown Redmond, and there's not even room to put in bollards there. So, I hope the city continues to take action to keep the community safer. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Our next three speakers are Connie Chapin, Murray McKinney, and Scott Raiser.
Connie?
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening Deputy Mayor and City Council members. My name is Connie Chapin. I've lived at the top of the Kirkland Highlands for over 60 years, and for the past 23 years, I've owned and operated Angel Fish Swimming from my backyard. I'm here tonight representing over 75 families in our neighborhood as we face a water pressure crisis that never before has been an issue. This is not a private homeowner problem. It's a city infrastructure failure, and it requires a city solution. In my own case, the impacts are everywhere: My six-bedroom home, my ADU, my extensive irrigation system, my fire protection system that the city required I put in, and my swim school business. My water pressure at home is only 20 to 30 PSI, sometimes dropping as low as 3 PSI. National standards recommend over 50 PSI. At these levels, not only does it take five minutes to fill a pint of drinking water, but I can't even be certain that my fire system would work if there was an emergency tonight. That is, that is dangerous to our Highland families and unacceptable liability for the City of Kirkland. Please help us fix this. Many of us tried following the city's advice to fix this ourselves with pumps and tanks, but plumbers walked away, bids were incomplete, and the costs were staggering. For fire protection alone, I was quoted over $11,000 just to retrofit a system that was already paid for. Plus, I would need to install a 350-gallon tank somewhere on my property to make it work. For my home and business, bids exceeded $33,000 additional to the fire protection, not including electricity and ongoing maintenance. No family should be expected to shoulder this just to have industry-standard water pressure. These costs don't even cover the time and money that us taxpayers have invested to find our own solution. My learning curve was extremely steep. I was left to my own resources to figure it out. It is the city that needs to figure it out, not me. The city is planning for greater density in all neighborhoods, including the Upper Highlands. With water pressure already at unsafe levels, adding more demand will only make the crisis worse. The system must be repaired before the intensity goes on. The bottom line is simple: Water pressure is not optional. It is fundamental to public safety, fire protection, and daily life. The city required these systems, the city controls the water supply, and now the city must make, provide a fix. On behalf of the Highlands neighborhood, I urge you to prioritize this issue and commit to a city-funded solution before we face a preventable emergency. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Connie. Murray?
My name's Murray McKinney. I built a house in the Highlands back in 1977 and have lived in the neighborhood ever since. As you may recall, I spoke at the June 16th City Council meeting regarding the low water pressure issue in the Upper Highlands neighborhood. I have a lot of technical information to share, but unable to do so this evening due to lack of available time. Last spring, the City of Kirkland modified the water system in the Upper Highlands neighborhood, and residents at the upper elevations have been suffering with a 30% reduction in their water pressure. Pressure at my house went from 68 PSI to 48. When we turned on a hose bib, the pressure drops to 20. Residents at higher elevations like Connie have even lower pressure. We've been living with this situation since the changes were made to the water system by the city last spring. Last fall, I did a Freedom of Information Act request to the city and obtained information that was shared between the city's Public Works Department and their civil engineering consultant, RH2. A December 18th, 2019 email from the consultant to the Public Works Department stated that if the proposed modifications were made, the water pressure at the higher elevations would be less than 30 PSI. Still, the city went ahead with the changes. A friend and neighbor of mine, Scott Stolman, who's a licensed civil engineer, looked at the information and came up with a relatively simple solution. At an October 16th, 2024 meeting at City Hall, this suggestion was presented to representatives of the Public Works Department and the civil engineering consultant. They agreed that this was a very good solution, however, they apparently have never moved forward with the design and implementation. In March of 2025, the city put out a flyer to Upper Highland residents stating that the city would have a consultant test of water pressure at their homes. Apparently, only 48 residents responded. The consultant charged the city $2,000 per home for the testing, which was approximately $100,000. Then in June, the city sent a letter to the 48 residents about a water mitigation rebate program, offering a rebate of $7,000 with no receipts, or $14,000 if you provided receipts. And with the $14,000 program, if all the money is not spent, the remainder is split 50/50 with the city. By accepting either rebate, the resident is required to sign a waiver agreeing that the program is the only remedy that the resident has for any loss of water pressure resulting from the March 2024 system enhancements in the Highlands neighborhood, and release and waive any and all claims against the City of Kirkland arising from or relating to any loss of water pressure. Although I want the water pressure my residents to return to what it was before the city modified their system, I'm not willing to sign the waiver, and at end, I have no means to make sure the city restores the pressure on their side of the water meter. I also felt that there are far more than the 48 residents who experienced reduced water pressure. Rather than spending $7,000 to $14,000 per home to modify their water system by adding booster pumps or other improvements, which would cost the city anywhere from between half a million to a million dollars, I have a petition which is asking that the city spend less than $500,000 to reestablish the water pressure as suggested in my friend's report. The work can be completed in less than two months and is estimated to cost less than $350,000. Also, a lot of residents don't have a suitable location to install a booster pump. Depending on where the water service enters a home, someone may need to remodel a bathroom, install the pump on the outside of the house--
Mr. McKinney, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Well, I provided each of you with a copy of my statement, which I wasn't able to complete. You got a map of what the pressures are at these 48 residents. I've included a copy of that email that was between the consultant and the city that it wasn't acted upon, and I've got a petition with over 100 signatures from north, from Upper Highlands residents that are just really upset. And we've had a meeting at the park up there, Highlands Park, on August 7th, and this is a grassroots campaign to get this thing fixed, so we're really frustrated.
Thank you.
We're trying to keep the pressure on the city to fix the water pressure.
Scott?
Thank you. My name's Scott Raiser, and I'm also a resident of the Highlands. And I think you all know what I do for a living, and, but I don't think you quite know the extent of it. I have had a nursery up in Kirkland for almost 30 years. And when I first started, there were so many nurseries in Kirkland. Vibrance was just outside of Kirkland and had 60 acres. Sweetbrier had three acres in Kingsgate. Griswolds had six acres in Bridle Trails. Finn Hill had 10 acres in Winita, and then there was Monroe's Nursery on 85th. Now, I am the last licensed grower of plants in the City of Kirkland. I started propagating 30 years ago just for my own use and my own landscape company. We did grafts, cuttings, some seeds, and I had endless supply because I have landscaped thousands of homes, and so I can go back and I can take a cutting and propagate anything. In the last 10 years, we have started allowing Kirkland residents to buy from us, and we ended up being a major supplier for the Kirkland Tree Program because people would just call us, I would recommend trees for their yards, or go to their yard and design it, and I would deliver. Most people don't want to put a tree in their Tesla, so I was a great source. During-- During COVID, we became even more popular because we let people come to our nursery by appointment. And so I have helped the Kirkland residents. And you have seen my work because it's everywhere in Kirkland. Most notably, I donated all the plant material in front of the Kirkland Library, and I organized my neighborhood to come plant it. So you have actually seen my work. I'm also one of the few nurseries in Kirkland that's not just carbon neutral, I am carbon negative. So I have about an acre between two properties next door to each other in Kirkland. In the past years, I've been able to water my nursery in about an hour. And I could do it, get up really early in the morning and do it myself. Since this water drop, it takes about six hours. I have less than 20 pounds of pressure. I have to employ people. It takes, costs me about $250 per day, and it's been fairly devastating. We're not talking about costs that haven't occurred. These are costs now that have occurred. It's cost me over $20,000. The irrigation system that I have is voided. I've put in a two-inch water main that runs everywhere in the property. And we mainly hadn't watered anyways, but we had a backup so that we could irrigate if I couldn't get to it. Now, I can't. In this packet, I have several pages. The first page shows the City of Seattle. We do over 300 planters for the Ferris wheel downtown. And I may donate plants to the City of Kirkland for the parks and for the library, but I do it for profit for the City of Seattle.
Scott?
Yes?
I'm sorry, your time is up also.
Oh, my gosh, that one's so.
I know, it goes fast.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to send us an email with the?
I will definitely send you. I will just tell you, it's been a horrible loss to me and my neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City clerk?
Our next three speakers are Maureen Baskin, Gary Sawyers, and Bee Naon.
Maureen?
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members. I am here, let's see, I live at 402 13th Avenue, Kirkland. As you said, my name is Maureen Baskin. I've lived in Kirkland for 30 years. The address that I'm at now, 19 years. I'm here today to oppose a current plan at 402 13th Avenue. And you have a diagram there of the property. I'm sorry, I can't show the rest of you. So this one here. And the net of it is, this plan was submitted to the city in January. April, the planning department returned a review of it with comments. And then it was, the sale was final to in Fort in June. So my concern is, as you're looking at it, it's basically three lots if you separated it. And the back lot is considered a natural growth protection. And they're able to, it would appear here on this plan, that they are using that as part of the floor area ratio. So they are actually squeezing in two duplexes and one triplex into the front two lots if you divided it up into thirds. So that is my first concern. It's too much for that particular area of the city for our neighborhood. And if you do get time to take a look at, I didn't give this to you, the city's comments, under the comments number seven, it does say, "Where native growth protection for slopes result in a restricted area for development, density may be limited to ensure that the far on the development portion of the site remains compatible with surrounding development and generally consistent with the floor area ratio limitation." It's pretty vague. It doesn't really tell the developer, you can't really use that as part of your floor area ratio. In addition, each property, there are seven, each one has one single car garage, and there's no additional parking on this lot. And there's no parking around the entire corner of the lot where the 20-foot setback is. So I hope that you will seriously consider that when the planning department comes to approve whatever density is required at that place. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. And I hope that you will truly consider our neighborhood in this instance. So I guess I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary?
Good evening. My name's Gary Sawyers. I've lived in Kirkland for about 18 months, so I'm a relative newcomer. I live right across the street from City Hall on 3rd Avenue. And from my unit, I get to look at the intersection of 3rd Avenue and 2nd all day, every day, where the stop signs are more a suggestion than a requirement. And sometimes they seem to come across as a challenge to drivers. And why is that relevant? Well, I am concerned and would ask the city and the staff to give additional thought to the proposal that is now being implemented to move the ballot box that is currently at City Hall to the Wester Lot and to redirect a substantial amount of traffic to facilitate that new, the new location of the ballot box. I fully understand that there is going to have to be some inconvenience associated with any movement of the ballot box. And the reason that the city has decided to move the ballot box is, or the reasons, I should say, are good and sufficient. So I don't quarrel with any of that. But I worry a lot as I look at the potential of up to 3,000 additional cars a day headed through the intersection that I watch every day. And I watch the pedestrians and the people walking dogs and the kids riding their bikes. I worry a lot that something very bad could happen there if that traffic is significantly increased. And so while I don't object at all to the notion of moving the ballot box, I would ask the city to take a long, hard look at its potential exposure and the potential public safety risks of increasing the traffic in that area. I just want to make sure something bad, something really bad, doesn't happen in connection with the relocation of the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Kirkland. Bee?
Good evening. My name is Bee Naon, and I have lived in Kirkland since 1997. And I'm going to repeat a bit of what the previous speaker said. And most people do know that there's a ballot box here at City Hall, but they may not know just how popular it is. It's usually one of the 10 most-used locations in all of King County. In fact, as we approach each election day, literally thousands of ballots are deposited each day into that box. And that's great. But with that comes traffic and other safety issues here at City Hall. And so the city has rightfully decided to move the ballot box to the Wester Lot. The city requested the change, King County approved it. And if anyone is wondering where the Wester Lot is, just south of City Hall where downtown employees park. But here's the problem. Those traffic and other safety issues that have plagued City Hall are just being moved a block to the south. As Gary just pointed out, it's a residential street in front of people's homes where pedestrians are regularly walking to and from downtown and the transit center with people walking dogs and kids and bicyclists and skateboarders, many of them, and motorists on effectively a one-lane street with intersections at the east and the west that are already challenging, one due to poor visibility getting in and out, and the other, as Gary aptly described, was the stop sign that pretty much no one, including city vehicles, actually stop at. And a hidden driveway that serves 21 households where everyone has narrowly avoided being T-boned at one time or another. I don't care about the nuisance factor of adding thousands of cars each day twice a year for a few days each time. I care about life safety. And that is the very reason you want to move the box away from City Hall, with which I agree. The city is planning to limit access to the Wester Lot by requiring people to only enter at 1st Street. However, if you put Wester Lot into your NAV or the address, or you just use the address, you're still going to end up on 3rd Avenue, which will add traffic to the challenging intersections and then be frustrated when it cannot get to the address of the Wester Lot. I've been told that the city has made this decision and they are sticking to it, even in spite of the safety concerns that have been raised. The city has made some good suggestions, and I thank David Walbrecht enthusiastically for his help on this, for suggestions for mitigation, but we can do more and we must do more, or people will be injured or worse. At least open this up to the affected residents, businesses, and downtown employees to provide recommendations, and let's actually implement them. Let's work together. Let's monitor this and make changes as they are needed. Council, we need your help here. It's a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city clerk?
Our next three speakers are Sarah Sanford, Cassie Joyner, and Ben Bahrami.
Sarah? Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you. I'm here representing a cul-de-sac of neighbors who are struggling with two of our members who insist on repeatedly feeding squirrels, crows, and anything else that has four legs that runs around the neighborhood. This is not the first time this has happened. It was quite extreme right before COVID, and then was pretty much put on the back burner because of COVID. Eventually, these two neighbors were contacted and asked to please conform with specific ways to do this feeding, not stop, but to feed these animals in a way that made it more difficult for the newest residents, the rats, to enjoy this bountiful feast. As a result, they did that for a while, and then they were told that if they provided rat abatement services, they would no longer be in violation. So they got rat abatement services. Unfortunately, as they've continued to feed these animals, the rats have completely exploded in population and now have taken over the entire neighborhood. We can't use our backyards. We all have to have rat abatement services. And even so, the problem isn't solved. One neighbor says there's a rat party in front of his house every night that he records on his Ring camera. We have all contacted the city. We've all been told that we should be contacting the county. We've all done that. The county makes it very clear that it is not acceptable to do this nuisance feeding. And yet, they have no enforcement mechanism to change it. My specific issue for the council tonight is, why the heck do you allow them to continue if they get rat abatement services? That doesn't solve the problem. It only continues it and makes it worse for the rest of us. In the vision, in Kirkland's vision, it says we are respectful of each other and fair. This is neither respectful nor fair to their neighbors. We have, sorry.
No, you have 28 more seconds.
Okay. We have to deal with this, really, public health issue. And, you know, we all, many of us have pets. We can't go out because they eat the excrement, and then they get sick. So it's a significant issue. We ask, please be in concert with the King County requirement and enforce it. Thank you.
Sarah, do we have your contact information? Have you filed a code enforcement case?
I have, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Cassie? Cassie Joyner?
Hello, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name's Cassie Joyner. I'm the president for the Kirkland Downtown Association. The Kirkland Downtown Association connects and supports merchants in the community through annual events for the public, focused in fostering business and organizing clean and a beautiful downtown. Everything we do is about building community and creating spaces where people can come together and connect. That is why I feel it's important to say thank you. Thank you for believing in the KDA and trusting us with the opportunity to bring something really special to Kirkland this holiday season. With your support and with the funding from the Tourism Development Committee, we are beyond thrilled and grateful to be bringing an ice rink to the Winterfest festivities this year. This has been a focused, passion project of the KDA, specifically two of our board members, Leanna Tomajin and Garan Olness, and has been something the community has been dreaming about for years. This will be an amazing way to brighten the downtown during the holiday season and drive thousands of visitors to our local businesses. Of course, this wouldn't have been possible without the incredible guidance and partnership of the Parks and Community Services. They have walked alongside us every step of the way, making sure we could make this dream turn into a reality. The ice rink will be set up right on the diamond at Lee Johnson Field at Peter Kirk Park, which will be the perfect setting, running from late November all the way till January 11. We see this not as just an activity, but as a gathering place, a way to bring people together in downtown, creating a new holiday tradition and connecting Kirkland urban and the waterfront businesses by providing a magical holiday experience. Welcome to all visitors in the Kirkland community during the winter season. On behalf of the KDA Board, our staff, and all of our volunteers, we just wanted to say thank you for trusting us and providing a partnership where we believe when we all come together, we can create really wonderful events for everybody. We can't wait to celebrate with all of you at the Winterfest tree lighting this year, which will be at Peter Kirk Park, and see how much joy this wonderful event will bring to our community. With sincere thank you and love, thank you for your support in helping us bring the ice rink to Kirkland. That is it.
Thank you, Cassie. We will be there. And just so you know, Scott behind you is a competitive figure skater, so he might be putting on a few demos.
This is good. We can't wait to see you there. Yes. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ben?
Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members, my name is Ben Bahrami, and I live in 116 Place in Gold Hill. And I'm here to respectfully ask for your support for constructing a retaining wall in 116 Place. And I provide some background information to show the importance of having such retaining wall at this place. A few years ago, a city permitted a four-lot developer to widen the 116 Place during the work drainage outlet in the public right-of-way that carried water from my home were crushed and buried with no connections. By the time we discovered that, it was too late. As a result, stormwater backed up and infiltrated under my foundation and causing erosion, soil loss, and major settlement, foundation crack, and interior cracks. And this is not just a property damage. This is a serious public and family safety and hazard. My wife is a cancer scientist who works from a home office right above the cracks and close to this steep bank. And my daughter's bedroom is right close to this crack foundation. And you can imagine how stressful it is to have and dealing with such a stress. And because the four-lot developer sold the property and now they are abroad, I have no recourse to go after them. And I'm grateful for the city manager and the legal team, which they are pursuing the option of pursuing the bond. And this is just some background to show the importance of having retaining wall in this exact location. And so the Gold Hill Storm Project originally proposed building a concrete gravity block retaining wall at this exact location, but it was removed from the plan for some risk consideration. And now, they have placed some temporary quarry rock at this place, which leaves this slope unstable, and it provides a lot of risk for landslide and closure. I respectfully request your support for allocating resources to approve the construction of a proper retaining wall at this location, which was originally considered and budgeted in the Gold Hill Storm Project, but now need a different design because of the risk factor. in the Goat Hill Storm Project, but now need a different design because of the risk factor. And this is a matter of road disability, public safety, and family safety, and I would greatly appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, how are we doing on time?
We have about six minutes left, and we have three speakers signed up.
All right. Who's next?
Our next three speakers are Nicole McKenzie, Ken McKenzie, and Alex Zimmerman.
Nicole.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I have a couple of things to talk about tonight. First of all, you guys had a lot of very complex and weighty issues in your packet and on your agenda for this evening, and I can't help wondering how you have the time with when you get your packets until the meeting to be able to review everything and be able to intelligently listen and comment on everything. I would suggest it would be helpful for you all and the public as well if the packets could be made available earlier. Second option, related. I was watching with my daughter the work session this evening, and during that session, there was a comment about, from Councilmember Tim Chisen, about having been able to meet with the property owner of the Goodwill site and see a rendering of the proposed development there, and noting that that wasn't in the packet, or the presentation for that matter. And my daughter, who is studying architecture at Cal Poly, said, "That's not in the presentation? How can they be talking about something without having that key piece of information available to them, having the rendering available to them?" Something to consider and to perhaps think, suggest to your staff that maybe that should be included in future packets and presentations. Finally, another item in the agenda this evening references the middle housing and progress on development of middle housing. And in the packet, there's a reference to the housing dashboard. You go to the link for the housing dashboard, it's not been updated since 2021. Not very useful. The information in the packet about projects that are in pre-development, projects that have been permitted, projects that have been actually built, are supposed to be included on that dashboard. The information in the packet is useful. It needs to be included. The dashboard needs to be updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
I'll sort of rush here as we're out of time. I came here tonight to give some voice to some concerns about transit changes that have been happening lately. The route, effective August 30th, Route 257 was permanently deleted and replaced by a new Route 256 by King County Metro, and Route 311 was also deleted. And there's an interesting thing called kingcountymetro.blog, where people have an opportunity, people mostly transit users, to comment, and I thought it would be kind of useful to give some voice to people who have been commenting on that blog, their transit users. So one person writes, "I'm no city planner, nor do I have expertise in transportation management," if it is such a thing, "but something tells me that taking away two routes and replacing it with only one actually reduces the amount of service." Another person writes, "There is already persistent overcrowding on the 311 and 257. I'm scared to see what it is like on the 256 with fewer buses and potentially even more riders with the route change to include South Lake Union, and it will add 20-plus minutes to my commute each way. If South Lake Union is such an important destination, why didn't you add a new route to accommodate South Lake Union rather than take away the 311 and 257?" Another person writes, "At least my concern regarding Routes 257 to 256, the least of my concerns is that it will reduce..." Hello. "...is that it will increase my daily commute by 20-plus minutes in both directions to get to Brickyard PNR." Another person writes, "If you continue to screw over the people in Kingsgate area, we've lost the 255 through here, the 236, the 252, and now you're taking the 257, all while you cut back the times of the 239. You can't get out of the neighborhood now." Another person writes, "These changes will make transit more complex and difficult with increased likelihood of delays, overcrowding, and safety hazards. Could you please share what data is informing the decision to remove both the 257 and the I live in Kingsgate and either take the 257, a close walk and a safe option during inclement weather, or walk to the Brickyard Park and ride, 20 minutes. The decision to remove both options will lead to several high-risk scenarios." Talks about how hard it is to get to the new location, and I'm out of time. Thank you.
Alex Zimmerman.
Yeah, it's me. Last in the row. Yeah. I'm trying. Yeah. You can do it. You cannot change your psyche. Yeah. Vive Trump! Vive New American Revolution! My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I am only one man in King County who speak every meeting about Trump and what is he doing right now for America. From my understanding, I stand in political for all my life, Trump is the best president. What does I know? We will do this. We will make America great again. So right now, I want to speak about fascism, what we have heard, what I call them Nazi Gestapo fascist mob bandito. Yes. I prosecute five times. Yeah. I have 6,000 day of trespass, 20 years in jail approximately. Similar. So I have right now a case. Trespass from Bellevue Mall, you know what it means, for staying in court. It's a misdemeanor. Yeah. Simple case. It's go for two years right now. Very interesting. Two years. It's no analogy in state Washington. So misdemeanor case, trespass, go for two years. It's only for Alex Zimmerman. Say, everybody love me, and exactly this Nazi Gestapo pig love me. So, two years. And this not a finish. So, go for another few months. That's a torture, you know what it means? Why is it torture? Where is torture come? It's come from Gestapo, yeah? From KGB, yeah? We have Gestapo? We have KGB? No, we don't. We have a policeman. So why policeman acting like a Gestapo in KGB, huh? Can you somebody explain to me? And I talk this 100 times. You more dangerous than Nazi or commie, because Nazi and commie have official legal government department. Gestapo and KGB, but you use policeman like Gestapo and KGB? Who are you guys? You are real more dangerous than Nazi or commie, you know what it means? You are pathological schizophrenic, probably. I'm not too much sure about this. So my question right now to people who elect you here, because you all identical, look, it's chief of police, come, and everybody happy. Why? Because she's a part of your mafia member. You understand? You're pure criminal, organized criminal. Is people supposed to be talk about here? Yes. He worked for a long time, chief of police? Yes. They supposed to be talk about you every day here, but you have a policy. We cannot talk about this. It's exactly what is fascism go bigger and bigger for this slave and happy cow. Vive Trump! I'm not... Doing something wrong.
All right, we are now closing items from the audience, and we are going to move on to our consent calendar. Before we have a motion, I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor Arnold to present the audit of accounts and to highlight the proclamations we have on consent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had payroll in the amount of $6,226,907.85, and bill is in the amount of $17,248,771.25. These numbers are higher than usual because of the time between our last meeting at the beginning of August and today, and a number of summer CIP projects during construction As part of tonight's consent agenda, the mayor, on behalf of city council, will be issuing four proclamations. First, September is proclaimed as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. This observance honors the courage of children and families facing cancer, celebrates survivors, and remembers those we've lost. Local resources such as Fred Hutch at Evergreen Health's Halverson Center and nonprofits like Footprints of Fight provide vital support for families in Kirkland. September is also proclaimed National Recovery Month. This is a time to celebrate individuals in recovery from substance use and mental health challenges and to recognize the professionals and advocates who support them. With the right treatment, support, and resources, recovery is real for everyone. There are resources and coordination services available locally in Kirkland through organizations like Youth Eastside Services for Tomorrow and the Regional Crisis Response Agency, and information available through agencies like the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Next, September is proclaimed Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Suicide continues to be a critical public health issue, particularly for LGBTQ youth. This month calls attention to lifesaving resources such as the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, and provides an opportunity to remind our community about local services available at the Connections Kirkland Crisis Response Center and through organizations like NAMI Eastside, Youth Eastside Services, and the Regional Crisis Response Agency. Finally, September 12th through 21st will be recognized as Welcoming Week. Kirkland joins our eastside partner cities in honoring the contributions of immigrant and refugee residents and celebrating this annual event. Kirkland community members are warmly invited to help us celebrate welcoming week during our annual City Hall for All on September 13th, where we will also be highlighting Kirkland's recent designation as the first certified welcoming city in Washington. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes our proclamations.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move up the option of the consent calendar.
Second.
And move by Councilmember Sweet, second by Councilmember Tim Chisen to approve the consent calendar. Is... All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I'm going to take a break. We need a quick little break. Let's take 10 minutes, and we will come back at 9:10. Let's take 10 minutes, and we will come back at 9:10.
No, I'm really like, I'm sweating.
We are back after a short break, and we are now going to move on to our business agenda. Our first item is a briefing on the speed limit setting policy. City manager.
All right. Welcome back. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and the council. So, we are checking in on our speed limit policy update. I'm here to give the presentations. Our transportation engineering supervisor, Jennifer Palmer, and also our transportation planner, Victoria Kovacs, is available virtually to assist if necessary, and we're looking for feedback from the council tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and Deputy Mayor and council members. Tonight, I'm here to give you an update on the speed limit policy that we have been working on. This is an update. We are recommending that you receive an update, get information, and then provide us feedback. This policy update is one of the key outcomes of the Kirkland Transportation Safety Action Plan. Madam Mayor, would you like me to pause?
Nope, keep going.
Which council will be asked to adopt later this year. Our vision for transportation in Kirkland is safe, connected, and multimodal. This project directly aligns with our Vision Zero goals, which is to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes by 2035 while reducing all crashes on our roadways. And we get there by using a safe system approach, which is a multi-layered system that focuses on the design and management of transportation systems to reduce the risk of crashes from happening in the first place, and then reducing the risk of severe injury or a fatality when they do occur. A little bit of background why we're bringing this item forward. In 2019, in the study period of 2019 to 2023, exceeding reasonable safe speeds was a contributing factor of 23% of fatal and serious injury crashes and 16% of all crashes. And as we know from physics, the forces of the crashes are more likely to be higher as speed increases, and thus, speed has an impact on safety. Our current speed limit setting methodology is based on the 85th percentile speed collection and only considers those current operating speeds on the roadway. New for the 2023 version of the METCD, that is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, say it with me now, now the METCD requires agencies to consider other contextual factors to set speed limits. Those include land use, pedestrian and bicycle activity, roadway geometrics, functional class, traffic volumes, crash history, et cetera. We brought this topic to you on the July 1st meeting during study session, so now we're digging more into specifically the document that we're putting together to evaluate how we set speed limits here in the city. We've also worked extensively with Transportation Commission on this topic. We've brought this topic along with the Transportation Safety Action Plan to commission at five previous meetings, as shown, and then we've collated their feedback and comments and questions and staff responses for you in attachment one. We also periodically convene an interdepartmental task force to talk about the speed limit setting policy and the Transportation Safety Action Plan. That consists of members from the Police Department, the Fire Department, City Attorney's Office, the Planning Department, City Manager's Office, and Transportation and Public Works. We heard some of the feedback that we heard last week from our interdepartmental task force includes considering emergency response times. This is like a theme that we hear a lot from our partners over in emergency response. So, from police and fire, we don't necessarily want to drop all of the speed limits all at once, because that would interfere perhaps with their ability to respond in a timely manner. We got some feedback to include more inclusive language around walking and rolling, and then to consider more countermeasures and ways to encourage slower, safer speeds. And I will say, that is a great feedback and a great comment, and it's, we have some ideas on how we could address that in a potential future work item. For now, the document that you have for review is the how document of how we would consider setting speed limits, not necessarily the where document or where first document, if that makes sense. So, I'm just going to touch on these policy principles. The first three on the screen are repeated from the last iteration of the policy as it stands. So, posted speeds should be safe and reasonable. That's in language from the RCW. Kirkland street speed limits are posted no greater than 35. Changes in speed should incur in five mile an hour increments. And then, roadways classified as local streets have a default regulatory speed limit of 25, whether posted enough, whether posted or not per state law. And then, designated school speed zones and streets designated as neighborhood greenways shall have a regulatory speed limit of 20. With the approval of the director, transportation staff can implement temporary construction zone speed limits for the times when roads are under construction where necessary. Arterial and collector roadways don't have a default speed limit and should be assessed under this policy. And then, new collector or arterial roadways without a speed limit already should be assessed under this policy. I think our arterial network's pretty set the way it is. I don't anticipate using that, but we wanted to have some language in there, just in case. I'm going to talk for a moment about what the policy, how it works for its evaluation methodology. So, this is a very data-driven, research-backed, science-based methodology. It's adapted from the NCHRP Report 966, which is a national document that is, again, backed by research on how to set speed limits and giving a recommended procedure and tool for that. And this is a more technical approach, and it accounts for more context rather than the one-size-fits-all approach for dealing with speed limits. The setting process would incorporate collecting operating speed data on our current roads, determining the speed limit setting group, applying those decision rules, making a recommendation for posted speed limit, and then getting it approved by council, since you, council, are the legislative body. You are the ones who get to decide on that per RCW. So, as an example, the roadway...
Jennifer, hang on a second. Councilmember Black has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify, because you kind of, you glossed over it, but that was something that jumped out at me, was the council approval aspect of it. It doesn't strike me to be a policy-level decision. Policy-level decision seems to be earlier in establishing the policy and the methodology. But you said it's required by RCW? RCW requires local councils to approve changes in speed limits?
That is my understanding, yes.
On each segment?
Yes. Every time you want to change a speed limit within the city, it needs to be approved by the governing body. And I'll look to city attorney to see if there's anything to add, but I'm fairly sure that, that's at least my interpretation.
I just pulled it up to look at it now, so we'll have to get back to you.
Okay, if you can get back to me about that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so first, we need to define our speed limit setting group, and we do that by using the roadway classification and then the lane use designation. That comes out of the comp plan, and the road classification comes out of the TSP. And you would use that to define either speed limit setting group A or B. A is, tends to be more for very dense urban areas, and B is more for suburban areas. And then, once you get that, you would apply some decision rules for all of these specific variables. A and B are fairly similar, the difference being that B includes more information on the geometry of that specific roadway. The outputs that you would get from this across the top column are either the closest 50th percentile or 85th percentile speed. So, again, this is like fairly scientific, but the, again, the 85th percentile speed as just an example, or as, to define it a little bit better, is the speed at which 85% of vehicles are traveling at or below. Same thing for 50th with the 50th percentile. And so, you would go through and do your evaluation on a specific road segment. You would, I always imagine this as checkmarks. You're checking different boxes as you go through and doing your evaluation, and then the checkmarks in the furthest left column takes precedence, which does bias toward slower speeds in general. But the methodology, so for example, if you had a high crash rate in the leftmost column, you would automatically pick that closest 50th percentile in this example. After we're done applying those decision rules, you apply your engineering judgment. So, this is where an engineer would sit down and, "Does this make sense?", and apply that lens. We want to make sure that there's continuity across road segments, so you wouldn't want the speed to jump from 25 to 30 to 35 and then back down. We want to have, to reduce confusion as much as we can. We also want to coordinate with our neighboring jurisdictions, take into account historical community input and crash risk or injury minimization, and then provide that in a document, an engineering study, and then submit that for council approval. Because they're the legislative body who approves speed limit changes.
She's still reading.
I'm going to, I'm going to move on, and move on.
We'll come back to that.
We'll come back. For implementation, in general, this policy is designed to implement with projects that change the road environment. So, if we're going to lower a speed limit, we would really want to see changes in the road design environment that would encourage those slower, safer speeds. As an example, it could be applied opportunistically with upcoming CIP projects that are in the hopper and in the design phase. That's a really good opportunity to use this. Another thing about implementation is, while this is the how document, how are we going to evaluate speed limits throughout the city? A speed limit, or speed management plan, excuse me, could be a potential future work item to help evaluate those speeds citywide, prioritize the speed limit changes, and identify accompanying engineering improvements to help encourage, again, those slower, safer speeds. And this, this implementation method is meant to be thoughtful in that if, you know, dropping the speed limits all at once, let's say, a roadway has operating speed somewhere around 35, and now we've changed the speed to 30, or 25, rather, without making any changes to that road environment, it wouldn't necessarily be easy to like defend or justify. So, if you're a police officer making a traffic stop, you know, there could be, very easily be a comment of, you know, whether or not it's fair, there's a fairness. And we want to get to safe and reasonable speeds, so that's where this is coming in with implementation. We want to also change the road environment to help encourage drivers to drive slower as a design function. For next steps tonight, we're looking forward to your feedback. Later on in this month, we're taking the full Transportation Safety Action Plan document to the commission, and we're hoping to get their recommendation for your approval. We'll then return in October and November with a full KT Sap document, hopefully for adoption coming up. And with that, I welcome discussion and questions.
Thank you, Jennifer, and I apologize for being distracting. My monitor went out, so I'll just look over Councilmember Sweet's shoulder when I need to counsel. Comments, questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Jennifer. When we were talking about this last month and said, "Okay, we're moving from 85th percentile speeds to something that considered context and crash history and all the great data you're doing," I was kind of surprised as walking through the methodology here that we're still starting with driver behavior as the initial with driver behavior as the initial point and making adjustments on that. And so I've got two questions. First is, how does this system deal with bad driver behavior? Because if you're saying, you know, people are already speeding or acting in an unsafe way, how do we get better safety when we're starting with driver behavior as our starting point in this process?
So this policy in and of itself starts with operating speeds, as you mentioned. The reason why that's used as a starting point is because it comes back to what we think about safe and reasonable for speeds. So there is safe, but if the road is wide open and it feels like a racetrack, people just won't drive it that way. So getting a capture of the operating speeds lets us get in the right area of what's reasonable. And that's why that methodology does start with the 50th and 85th percentiles. And then based on that context, we might bring the speed down to more closely align with the 50th percentile speed instead of the 85th. But that's just more of that context. The other question you had is, how does the system deal with bad driving behavior? And this policy is really, as I said, like the how document. I think in the future, we could implement a future work item such as a speed management plan, which lots of other agencies have done, to help identify where we're seeing the most of that top line speeding. And then putting together some kind of toolbox. It could, it could mean, you know, and putting tools in our toolbox for like in our arterial traffic calming program and seeing ways that we can slow them down. And it might be in partnership with enforcement. There's lots of different avenues, including, you know, more outreach, more public education. It's kind of that safe system sort of multi-layer approach where we're looking at safer drivers, safer road environments, and so on. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you. One of the things that would be helpful when we look into this in October would be if there's any case studies or real-world data, some examples of how this would work through the process and what the outcomes would be. I'm interested in this because I still worry that if you have, given what we know about speeds and that we want to, lower speeds are safer and have less injury and death from crashes, that a system that starts with driver behavior, how does that get to lower speeds when appropriate? So if we could walk through, if we had the opportunity to walk through the process as we look at this going into the fall, I think that'd be helpful.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilwoman Pascal?
Thank you. Thanks, Jennifer, for the presentation. And I was glad to see the close coordination with the Transportation Commission, all the questions in the back of the memo that have been asked through this process. Couple of questions. One is, well, maybe I'll just kind of give some context. One of the things that I know that the Active Transportation Safety Council has been pushing for quite some time, that I have the privilege to sit on, is encouraging local agencies across the state to modify their speed limit on local streets from 25 to 20. And there's communities across the state that have done that, and that's a policy. It's a policy call, and RCW doesn't require engineering evaluation for that. And that RCW was specifically revised to encourage agencies to more easily, cost-effectively make that change, recognizing those streets generally should be the, you know, slower speeds. And, you know, in my experience, I haven't heard of, I've only heard positive things from those communities that have done that. So the question for you all is, I noticed that you said that the default speed limit for local streets would remain at 25. Did you consider that? And is that information that you can share as to why that isn't being part of this proposal?
Yeah, so my understanding of the RCW is that the default regulatory speed limit is 25 for the state for local streets. However, the recent RCW change, I understood to mean that now agencies have the ability to change it to 20 without that engineering study to back it. So really, you know, that would be a council decision if you wanted to drop it from 25 to 20. That's something that we would look to you for guidance on.
I think that would be worth considering as part of this process, and I'd like to get transportation staff, you know, input on that as, if we were to consider that. So I personally would like to see us consider that, but I'd also like the professionals to provide and weigh in on that as well. So that's one thing. The next is that kind of build off of Deputy Mayor's comments is, I don't, I think it's a, it seems to be a very sound policy, that's a draft policy. I think what would help is that it's very abstract. Could you come back with a few examples of, take a couple corridors, you know, that you might know about, or I could suggest a few perhaps, or I'm sure we could, and run it through the, you know, the calculations and let's see where it lands? That would be really helpful. Because how do you, how do you know if the policy is, how are you comfortable with the policy if you don't see kind of how it works? If you don't, you know, kick the tires a little bit?
Understood. If I may respond quickly to both you and Deputy Mayor Arnold. I'm kicking myself right now because I did the example for Transportation Commission during the July meeting. I walked through, here's how you do, we used wanting to drive as our example corridor. And the suggested, the recommended speed limit that we came out with was 30, so reducing it from 35 to 30. So I invite you to watch the recording, or I could absolutely bring back a few more examples of what that would look like in practice.
Yeah, if you could just share the examples, that'd be helpful. I have a lot of things to watch. I don't know if I want to watch the commission, but I'm happy to if that's easiest.
It should come to all of us.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make light of that, but it's, it can be tedious. And then the last kind of comment is I like, I like what you talked about implementation in terms of a speed management plan. Because I guess I'm concerned that we would go about this in an ad hoc way, you know, as capital projects come up. It's, I mean, I think the value of this is the system aspect of it and that we're making changes systematically rather than ad hoc basis. So if that means that what you're describing as a speed management plan would lay out the implementation of how you actually execute on this, is that what you mean by that?
I think so, yeah. So prioritizing the areas you would tackle first and then going through the speed limit process and figuring out if, what changes from an engineering perspective would best support achieving those speeds that we want to see for slower and safer speeds.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Falcone, before I go to you, City Attorney has an answer to our burning question.
I guess I should say I have an answer-ish. The, sort of on quick review of the statutory language and some research with MRSC, which sometimes provides quick interpretations, their recommendation, their interpretation has been a conservative one that says, based on the way the definition is of local authority, that that means the legislative body of the city. We're going to do some research over the next couple of weeks to see if we think a different definition might be just as sustainable as the more conservative, risk-averse nature that MRSC approaches things. So we'll get back to you with some more information, but for now, I'd say it's safe to assume that the legislative body is the one who should do that under sort of a, one reading of the statutes.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you for that, City Attorney. I remember us having a discussion about this, I think on like Goodwill Hill, about the speed limit and signage there and approval, so that's helpful, that clarification. Thank you. Well, Jennifer, thank you for this body of work. Thank you for the multiple iterations of Transportation Commission and council and the other stakeholders that you mentioned. I just want to start off by saying I really appreciate the memo. I particularly appreciate when there's like the question and answer with like commissioners and councils' feedback and the responses. That is so helpful and time-saving as a consumer of that memo, so thank you for that. I really genuinely appreciate that. I appreciate the vision and goals that you presented here tonight. That's really helpful for us to really center why we're doing this. And I agree with Councilwoman Pascal that I also appreciate that we're looking at this, you know, holistically, you know, systemically and not just ad hoc. So that's really, that is also helpful. We have a lot of plans. I know I've said this before with other plans. We have like plans inside of plans and other plans that overlap. And so some of my comments may be directly related and some indirectly related as well that I believe are relevant. First, under the policy principles number two and the, also the one that Councilwoman Pascal mentioned, that was, I believe, policy principle number four, I agree, and I want to add, I agree with his comments around like, let's consider 20 miles per hour on our local streets. And I mean, I do believe that it's important for folks to, again, holistically know what the expectations are for speed limits in our, on our roads, right? And I believe it'll be more effective if we do a larger-scale reduction in speed limits so that people know what to expect, right? And so I think I would like to consider that and also would like to question a little bit more the maximum of 35 miles per hour. Why 35 miles per hour? Why not 30 miles an hour, for example? That's important that we consider that during this because I, and I realize that these types of policies could and will be, will have a financial impact. I forget the number of signs. I remember like, was it 600, I think? Yeah, but I remember reading that in the memo and thinking, wow, I know we have our own sign shop, however, that would be a pretty big task to do all those signs. And so I know it is something that would have impact, that we shouldn't consider lightly, but also this has very real impacts on the life and safety of our community. And so I do want us to consider both policy principles to and for reducing those speed limits citywide. But we also know that of the three Es, the engineering, education, and enforcement, that engineering is the most impactful, right? The studies show that. The studies show that in education and enforcement, like having speed limits and enforcing the speed limits, is helpful. Those studies, you know, some of those studies also do show that the impact of enforcement is very short-lived, right? When you are perhaps speeding a little bit and you see a police car, you hit the brakes. Or someone flashes their lights, you know that there's a police car coming up, and you tap the brakes so that you slow down and don't get a ticket, right? But maybe a week later or the next month, a lot of folks are not, when the police officer is not in that location, are not obeying the speed limits. We know that that is the reality, and we know that studies have shown that. And so also, similar to some of my fellow councilors' feedback, I do support and appreciate in the memo, the exploration of additional automated enforcement. I know that's not popular. I get it. Like, those of us making these decisions are drivers too. I, you know, get nervous driving, wanting to drive in Kenmore, like trying to remember really, really hard to make sure I'm not speeding so I don't get an automated ticket there. But I do think that it does impact behavior, that folks know that that enforcement is always there. It's always a visual, right? We can't always have a police car enforcing speed limits everywhere throughout the city, but those enforcements are a visual reminder and a constant reminder to folks that they need to obey that, right? And so I do support that, support having that conversation around what that would look like and how we could do that to best keep folks safe. I also believe that, I appreciate the comment or the part of the policy where we tie the speed limits to roadway environment changes as well, improvements, the engineering aspect, right? That we all know is really, really important. We also know, we, I mean, it mentions, I don't know if it was in your briefing or in the memo, mentioned, maybe both, mentions like some of the CIP projects that we're working on. I have a couple of concerns about that. First is, we have a very long list of roadway improvements and transport, as you're very well aware, on the CIP list, both active transportation and roadways, and they're very expensive, and a lot of it is on the unfunded list. And so we don't know if or when those projects are going to get funded and completed. And so this is a very real, these are very real safety issues now that we're facing. Also, that lends itself to being more like piecemeal with the projects and therefore piecemeal with tying it to reductions in speed limit, which this, which this study also says we shouldn't do, right? Like that it's important to not have, you know, go up and down, up and down, and kind of, you know, changing speed limits too much. So we kind of set level expectations so folks know what the speed limits are. So because of that, I would really like, and I don't know if this is part of the follow-up plan coming out of this, but to me it's very related, is for us to look at more inexpensive and easier, faster ways to change the engineering of our roadways to encourage folks to drive slower. We have some of that in our CIP plans, but a lot of them are very expensive things that aren't going to happen for quite some time, like I mentioned. And so, you know, let's think of like, we already are doing some of this, but let's do more of narrowing lanes and speed humps. I know you talked about first response stuff, so I know we have to balance that there with bulbouts, with, you know, small traffic circles like we have on Seventh Avenue. I think there's a lot of speed and traffic calming that we can do in addition. And I think of, I know Councilwoman Pascal was an advocate in years past for a similar lens on our more active transportation infrastructure. For example, instead of requiring like the full-on sidewalks when we were putting in walkways, putting in race curbs and realizing that that's not the best, you know, fanciest solution, but it's something that we can do in the interim that may be moderately temporary, but it still will have a big impact. And we could do those things and simultaneously reduce speed limits. And I feel like some of those kind of interim, less expensive options, we should be looking at in order to be able to tie that to reducing speed limits much sooner and much more comprehensively throughout the city. I also appreciated in the memo that, again, going back to the Q and A, I did not watch every single Transportation Commission meeting on this. I do try to watch as many board and commission meetings as I can, but like Councilwoman Pascal, I have a long list of them. And so I really appreciated the Q and A in there, and I noticed on the July meeting, there was a question, I think it was question number 31 in there, related to Senate Bill 5595, the shared streets law, which, you know, which as we know, allows for speed limits to be set on shared streets instead of 20 miles per hour, 10 miles per hour, and having true shared streets. And where pedestrians can walk in the street and the expectation is that cars are driving really slow in those streets. This is something that the governor just signed into law earlier this year, and I would like for us to look at as part of this. I know that the answer was basically, that doesn't have to do with this study, but I really think it does have to do with the resulting plan, the next step, because that is a way to, you know, going back to our, to our goals of the transportation vision of having a safe, connected, and multimodal transportation system. And so that really helps with all of those things, being safe, connected, and multimodal to have some of those, to look for opportunities to have a shared street here in Kirkland. I'd really like to see us do that. I mentioned automated enforcement. And lastly, I'd like to mention, this is indirectly related, but I'm going to bring this up every opportunity I have. I've brought it up probably a dozen times over the past handful of years, and it was raised tonight as well during public comment, and that is looking at safety improvement opportunities in parking lots. This may, you know, may or may not be city property. We've talked about this before. I remember in our original, I think it was our original Vision Zero, you know, discussion, at least the first one that I was involved in on council, maybe four years ago. I'm just ballparking, I don't remember exactly, but all the deaths that were, you know, pedestrian deaths in our city were all in parking lots. There were like four of them, I think, the year prior, or something like that. Don't quote me on the exact numbers. But I remember that being really striking to me that we, that it's something that's not directly city property. And I know, you know, some of the families of some of those that have lost loved ones. We've lost, you know, a valued community member, as was mentioned earlier tonight, this past week. And so this is something that, again, I know it's not directly, it's indirectly related to what we're doing, but so many of our plans overlap that I want us to figure out solutions for how we can partner with private parking lot owners to be able to create safer things. I don't know if it means having some sort of, you know, grant opportunity or something in addition to having obviously increased and improved standards for new parking lots or whenever parking lots are modified or updated, but even for existing ones. I'm sure that property owners, at least some of them, want to improve the safety of their parking lots, and if we can partner and help guide them in doing so, I think we have a responsibility to do so because it's still within our community. to do so because it's still within our community, even if it's not on our property. So, I just want to highlight that because I feel very passionately about that. And I feel passionately that we're not doing enough and that we have a lot more opportunity to do better with parking lot safety in our city. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank my colleagues for all their comments. There's a couple of things I want to add my voice to. So, I really did appreciate sharing the conversation that was had with the Transportation Commission in the memo. Thank you for that. You know, as I read the, you know, if I sort of read the tea leaves of the conversation that the Transportation Commission had, I think they have some of the same reactions that I had in reading the memo, which is that I feel like there's, ought to be a way to simplify this. And it's, feels a little unnecessarily complex right now in its current form, current proposal. And so, I want to sort of talk about what I mean by that and maybe suggest that, you know, there might be some ways we can streamline this. So, I also think it was really helpful. I appreciate Councilmember Pascal reminding me of, sort of the origin story of this conversation about lowering speed limits. Really, the overarching policy is, you know, to help save lives for the reasons that have been outlined here, let's look at reducing speed limits across our city by five miles per hour to down to 20 miles per hour in, you know, on local streets that aren't arterials and, and collectors. And that's kind of where I'd like to start with sort of simplifying this. And I understand, and I do want to understand the statutory framework that we're operating under here a little bit better, and I think I will in follow-up conversations with the City Attorney's Office. But I totally understand a statutory framework that says, listen, the default is 25 miles per hour unless otherwise posted. That makes perfect sense to me. I also understand a statutory framework that says the local legislative body sets the speed limit policy for the city. I'm going to, I'm going to just say, I may find out that the RCW requires the city council to speak to the speed limit on each segment, but that kind of surprises me honestly. If, especially when we go through the process that we're describing here and we describe the penultimate step as a great deal of engineering judgment, it's kind of surprising to me that the penultimate step is engineering judgment and the final step is council approval on a segment-by-segment basis. Again, I draw a distinction between setting speed limits on a segment versus an overall citywide default. So, I want to poke around and understand that better. I appreciate the comments about speed management plan. I, if what we're talking about is a speed management plan that would take us from sort of ad hoc implementation to sort of, to a, some kind of thoughtful approach to implementation, I understand we're going to have incremental implementation, unfortunately. But if what we're talking about in a speed management plan is, is moving from, I think what's the memo describes as an ad hoc, largely ad hoc implementation or coupled with development, if that takes us from that to sort of more planned implementation, that's something I would like to see. And I think it's just reiterating what has been said by a couple of my colleagues, but I just wanted to add my voice to that. Simplification. So, the way I would like to see this like greatly simplified is we have a goal of potentially reducing default speed limits to 20 miles per hour. So, let's just say that. 20 miles per hour is the presumptive speed limit in any city street in Kirkland. First exception, collectors and arterials. Instead of 35, let's make that 30. Now, that becomes the presumption. So, now we have a 20-30 presumption across the city. Now, what I would be looking for as a policymaker is I would be looking for then engineering judgment to suggest that this should go from 20 to 25 at this segment based on engineering judgment. And on this arterial or this collector, it should go from 30 to 35 based on engineering judgment. And what I'm looking for here is, and I think this is consistent with the original origin of this conversation, is what I'm looking for is reducing speeds, speed limits. And I realize, by the way, we should be clear about that. There's two different things, reducing speed limits and reducing speeds. And those are two different things. But what happens is we get them so conflated together that we don't do anything about speed limits because we're so worried about speeds. And what I'm saying is to simplify this and so that we can actually make some progress in the near term, let's focus on speed limits for a moment. And I understand that's kind of what state bodies that have looked at this from a traffic safety standpoint have said is, hey, look at reducing your speed limits. So, let's not get bogged down in reducing speeds. Let's focus on reducing speed limits. A default of 20, 30 in arterials and, and collectors, that's the presumptive speed limit. And what I want to do is I want to do that reduction in speed limits without waiting for all of the engineering improvements, system-wide, that would be required to reduce the speeds using engineering. And I totally get that if we are focused on reducing speeds and that's where we absolutely need to ultimately be focused, then we need the combination of speed limits and engineering improvements. But what the engineering improvements, we can't re-engineer the entire system in Kirkland tomorrow. So, we're not going to get reductions in speed limits through incremental improvements in engineering design. So, we start with speed limits, then we, to couple that, we couple lowering the speed limits, a simple, a simple approach to reducing speed limits. We couple that with a plan through our CIP to introduce more and more engineering improvements that reduce speeds. And we look, and I just want to add my voice to those who've said, and we look for the low-hanging opportunities. We don't over-engineer every reduction, every traffic calming measure. They're simple, if there are simple things we can do to reduce speeds, let's do it. So, wrapping that all up, I would greatly like to, and I don't want our speed management plan, one of the things I gleaned from reading about the speed management plan, it was also going to be like us legislatively determining a complicated engineering methodology. I'm not interested in that. If the speed management plan is a, is a sensible implementation plan, yes. If we're waiting for a several-thousand-dollar plan for how our professional transportation professionals are going to apply their engineering judgment to segments, I'm less interested in that kind of plan. I think that's something our professionals can do using their engineering judgment. So, simplify this greatly. Let's come up with presumptive speed limits. Let's allow for a release valve if engineering judgment suggests higher speeds. Let's have a speed management plan that suggests how we're going to implement these speed, reduce speed limits over time as expeditiously as possible. And then, let's of course also look at engineering improvements on all our segments to, that ultimately will ultimately reduce speeds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. You've gotten some robust feedback. And I agree with everything that you've heard this evening. So, we look forward to seeing you in October.
Thank you.
All right. We are now moving on to our Transit Needs Study Scope of Work, City Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, while we're switching out, this is another one where we're following up from our original discussion where we got some council feedback. So, we want to make sure that we're accurately reflecting what you told us. So, I had to give that presentation is our Transportation Planner, Kimberly Sciver.
City Manager, Mayor Curtis, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. Good evening. Tonight, we're talking about the Transit Needs Study. We are seeking your concurrence on the scope of work. As a reminder, we are implementing our Transportation Strategic Plan and specifically the goal for transit to support and promote a transit system as a high-value option for many trips. The Transit Needs Study was identified in the Transportation Strategic Plan, and the funding for that was approved as part of the 2025-26 budget. And this is a follow-up from our conversation at the study session from June 3rd. The proposal for the scope of work is to break it out into two parts, a needs assessment and a transit strategy. I'll talk about both of those. So, for the needs assessment, we would begin with gathering information from known sources. So, one thing we heard loud and clear from the, from the last conversation with council is to not start from scratch or reinvent the wheel. And so, this would include looking at what other cities have done and also looking at what we've heard from previous public engagement processes, look at other information that we can derive such as origin and destination data that can come from a variety of sources such as our commute trip reduction program and other technology tools. We will compare existing and future land use from our comprehensive plan to existing and future transit service. And what we would include in and consider future, the proposal is to assume the K-line, the stride BRT, and increased service levels. And to, for, we plan to coordinate with Metro and to better understand what their targets are for the future. This will include a public engagement process, which I'll talk about in a minute, with the whole goal of identifying travel patterns and more specifically the needs and gaps, which would essentially become our needs assessment. This also would include a policy summary, looking at not just Kirkland and town transit, but also Metro's policy documents. This is really to have that branch of how the city and the, and council, that a member, member or members that sit on our Regional Transit Committee and, and for staff supporting what we might advocate for, particularly with Metro. The next opportunities for that are when Metro updates their policy documents. The last time those were updated were in 2019. And so, they'll, they will be doing that at some point. And then, the next time Metro conducts a restructure, and the next opportunity for that would be when Sound Transit Stride comes online. And of course, any other opportunity that the council would like to advocate. So, would include a variety of things in this needs assessment. We'll talk a little bit more about the public engagement process. And the first step would be to collate what we've already heard. We asked a lot of questions about transit and about ridership patterns as part of our Transportation Strategic Plan. Metro conducted quite a lot of engagement as part of the K-line. They were, they had two different phases of public engagement. They went and tabled and asked a lot of general transit questions, not just about the K-line. They even went to neighborhoods that are not just on the K-line route. For instance, they went to the Winita Public Market and tabled. And then, also did outreach for, as part of the restructure related to the line two. Our sustainability ambassadors are also conducting, have been conducting transportation surveys within the high schools. And so, there is a lot of information that we already know. And for instance, just as an example, our Transportation Strategic Plan survey, there were only 15% of people that said that they take transit regularly. But 75% of the people that answered the survey said that they would be interested, either somewhat extremely interested in taking transit more. Beyond that, we would still conduct public engagement as part of the Transit Needs Study. And this would be more of an online interactive tool or survey. The interactive map that we use for the Transportation Strategic Plan was, was very popular. We got a lot of positive responses, both in the, with people participating in it and then also complimenting that it was a good tool to use. So, something creative that can really engage people. We would like to then, and more of a Phase Two of public engagement, work with focus groups. So, once we've done our data gathering and our initial survey, really work with focus groups on what we're hearing to really hone in on what those needs and gaps are. And then, when we get into the discussion, I'd really like to hear from you about the proposed focus groups. And then, also of course, engagement with you and the Transportation Commission. So, as I had mentioned, the purpose of the needs assessment through our data gathering, the analysis and public engagement is to really identify those needs and gaps for the city. But then, we would move on to building a transit strategy. One thing that I, that was mentioned in the, at the last meeting was that we have the opportunity to, to conduct this Transit Needs Study. I think the term that was used was gilded and that, to have this gilded study and how can that also help other jurisdictions, smaller jurisdictions that might not have the opportunity? This first bullet is really about putting a toolbox together for, as a resource. This would be looking at what other cities have done, what, and also what are public and private transit options are available? What are the service types? And also, what are the requirements for those? Any type of transit service would have some kind of route or service area. They would need some, a level of ridership that would make that successful. It would require staffing. What are the, and costs? What are the pros and cons of different types of service? So, that's really the toolbox. It's an informational piece that would really give us some, what options are out there to play with. And the next stage of that is really threading that needle and taking a look at those transit options and identifying how those transit options meet our needs and gaps that we've identified through the needs assessment process that we, and that, in terms of threading that needle, that would have to take into account the different land use types. Not all transit service would be appropriate for every neighborhood and also the population served. We could end up with many transit options to fill a particular need or gap. And that leads us to the third piece, which is a decision-making process or tool or mechanism that can help us narrow down which options serve our, our community the best. So, essentially identifying the needs and gaps, identifying the transit service options, and then linking those together to find out which best works for us. The schedule, we are, we do want to make sure that we have enough time to really gather this information and, and thread that needle to, for this recommendation. The first, the proposals of the first quarter were really deep into that data gathering process and developing the public engagement tools, which we'd like to start around quarter two. The, the, there will be a lot of overlap with these various phases of the project, particularly between the community engagement and the needs assessment. The proposal here is that by the time we finish the community engagement process, the needs assessment will almost be finished. But I would like the opportunity to come back to the city council and talk about what we've heard from the community engagement and from our data gathering and analysis, but be able to gather feedback from, from council before we complete the needs assessment. And we can also talk about the next stage in the, in the transit strategy. And with that, our, my, our big questions, my big questions for you are, do you have any adjustments to the scope of work? Is there anything missing? And then, do we have the right, the right touch points with you for your feedback?
Thank you, Kim. Well done. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Kim. As Kelly said, well done. I think that this is actually a great description of the scope of work. And, and even the timeline works for me. But what doesn't work for me is the fact that we're going to open a BRT station almost within this timeline, and we don't have any buses going to the BRT station. I believe there's some level of urgency about that and that we should have a shorter timeline or, and I've said this, I know, for years. If we're building a BRT station, we need buses coming up from, from Redmond. We need to make the connection from the K-line. We need all of those connections or we're not going to have anybody at our BRT station. So, that's where my urgency is. I think a transit plan is a really, really good idea. We should have done it years ago. And I, it's a body of work that I absolutely buy into because I believe that we are, we do understand that understand that our community does want that service. And people my age in particular, as we're aging out of our cars, need to have the ability to travel. But my urgency, again, is around how do we get bodies to the BRT station by the time it opens?
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of thoughts in my mind. I mean, overall, I thought the scope captures what we discussed last time. I have some specific things I was just thinking about, wanting to make sure you think that the scope will potentially address these things. One is that King County Metro Long Range Plan was last updated just like 2021, I think, right after COVID. And there's just been so many changes in how people get around. Do you think that this effort could identify recommendations to update that plan for Metro, at least for the Kirkland area, that we might come up with some things that we see that just maybe no longer make sense or need to be modified, and that would be shared with Metro?
Yep. That would be the policy review piece of...
And then a couple of other things were, if Metro Flex goes away in Wanita or Fennhill, I mean, I hope it doesn't, but if it does, will this strategy help identify what could be in its place and how do you address those transit deserts? And then the biggest thing that I would like to see, a couple of things are, when it comes to the needs assessment, is we have transit-dependent populations and other communities have more than us, and so they get a little bit more favor in terms of future transit service. And then we have discretionary transit trips, and those are trips that have fallen off over the last five years. Those are people that don't need to use transit. They'd like to use transit, but maybe the service isn't very convenient or comfortable, whatever, so they choose to drive or do something else. It'd be nice to understand that magnitude that we see in Kirkland, because you really have to target those populations a little bit different. And then the thing that I've also been asking for is just kind of a running history of transit service hours in Kirkland. I'd love to see that. I'm absolutely convinced that we have less transit hours than we did 10 years ago, but maybe I'm wrong. But I'd love to, if we don't track that, how do we know where we're at and what to ask for? Anyways, I think there's a reason why that information isn't readily available, but it'd be nice to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, let me just add my voice to Councilmember Pascal's request that we do find a way, if we can, to track service hours, because I do think that's important. And actually, it relates to, I just wanted to make two sort of key points that are sort of key to me in this work. By the way, great work. I think the scope is great. I just want to double-check on these two things. One is, I can't wait to see the needs assessment, honestly. I'm incredibly curious to find out what we find from that assessment. I want to make sure that we're going to find out needs, at least two different buckets. Needs for those residents of Kirkland, frankly, folks who work in Kirkland, who spend their days in Kirkland. The needs of those who are transit-dependent, certainly, that's sort of the obvious one. And then I hope that we're going to also understand a little bit the needs of the voluntary riders and what they would need, for lack of a better term, in order to use transit more frequently as an alternative to driving in their vehicle. So Kimberly, the needs assessment, we're going to have some answers to those questions?
That's the goal.
That's the goal. The goal is to have some answers to those questions, some insights there?
Yep.
In both of those buckets?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I imagine it'll be a mix. If I had a cross-the-ball, if I could see in the future, we might have a mix of this senior community needs to get to this location. I know one of the gaps is going to be getting us up the hill or getting people to the BRT station. There could be, and then you highlighted a little bit, is that maybe there's a higher level of a need or gap, such as higher frequency or fewer transfers. And so we'll probably get a mix. My job and the jobs of the consultants, we're going to help have, we will be tasked with figuring out how we represent that in terms of needs and gaps and how we can specifically address those.
All right, perfect. So thank you for that. And then the other thing I wanted to just double-check on is, I certainly expect to be in a position to start with this transit study, to start thinking about solutions that we might implement as a local agency. That certainly should be one goal. But what I really, I want this to be a really powerful advocacy tool with our transit partners. And that's mentioned, and Councilmember Pascal, I think, was hinting at or saying it directly, that this needs to be something that's a really powerful advocacy tool that we can use with our transit partners to say, this is why Kirkland needs this type of service, that type of service, this number of hours, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that at the end of this, that's what we have, is something that we can take to our transit partners and really make data-driven arguments for why Kirkland needs the greater transit service. So you're going to say that's the goal. Is that right?
We will do that.
Okay. All right. I thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate my colleagues' comments on this. I agree that we're pretty much there, and I appreciate and agree with the path forward on this. I agree with Councilmember Sweet on the BRT connections. I think that's really crucial, something we need to have a sense of urgency around. I also, I know I've said this in the past when we've discussed this as well, but just underscoring and taking a step further what Councilmember Pascal mentioned about dependent and discretionary riders. I appreciate that in the needs assessment, you mentioned comparing existing and future land use and growth and tying it to transit service and transit needs. So I would just like, where possible, to have that nuanced understanding of dependent and discretionary riders, not just currently, but looking to the future as well. Because obviously, I know I've said this before, but there's obviously a link to income and being transit-dependent of a rider. And so as we hopefully move forward with seeing more of our affordable housing needs in our city, we are likely anticipating an increase in dependent riders and transit. So I just want to make sure that that nuance is captured in the needs assessment. I appreciate the detailing out the different focus groups, populations that we're going to be engaging with. I think it's really important how we recruit folks as well to reduce bias and to have a good mix of folks. For example, we mentioned youth and parents/PTAs. What I would not like to see is just our youth board and our PTAs, because that's going to be quite different and not necessarily representative of the different diverse voices in our communities. So I, anyway, just want to make sure that we realize that PTAs do not, one, do not really represent the full parent demographic, and also that that is just for a certain, for the majority of folks who likely do send their kids to the local schools, but there's also homeschooling and private schools and other, and plus, parents who, for a variety of reasons, are not involved in the PTA. And I think that there's systemic demographic differences there. So I just want to make sure that we're mindful of that in how we recruit. Similarly, with businesses and employees that are mentioned, I wouldn't want just business owners kind of handpicking who they're going to send to the focus groups. I think that that'll be more the voice of business owners and really not of employees. And so perhaps going to labor, going to unions, et cetera, to recruit might be a better source than just have a variety of sources, right, and not just one source. So anyway, I just want to encourage us in our recruitment of the focus groups to really be thoughtful and mindful, just like we would in sampling for a survey, to make sure that it was representative. Obviously, how we recruit for focus groups really makes a difference in whose voices are in the room and how the discussion goes, too, right? Because sometimes folks might have a particular point of view because they don't hear the perspective of other folks, but a focus group really is not just a series of in-depth interviews with individuals, right? It really is folks bouncing ideas off one another and learning from one another and sometimes reaching consensus, sometimes not. But there's a lot of value in having diverse voices within a single focus group. So anyway, just want to mention that because that could have a huge impact on the data that we receive from the focus groups. And I just had a little bit of, not red flags, yellow flags, with some of the language on the different focus groups there and how we potentially could impact our recruitment. But I'm looking forward, like Councilmember Black said, to seeing the needs assessment and making sure that this is really actionable for our advocacy, to have better transit service, to meet the needs of our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to move on to our next item, which is the approval of the memorandum of agreement and funding agreement with East Rail Partners.
Okay, and I believe Kimberly's also going to be doing this presentation as well. So I want to check in with you quickly. We have a short presentation on this memorandum of agreement. Take it away, Kimberly.
All right. I can figure out how to carry again. I will get faster at this every time. For this one, I just have one slide. The funding for the support of East Rail Partners for 2025, 2026 had been previously approved in the last budget cycle. The reason why there are two different agreements, one, the MOA, is a longer-term, 10-year agreement, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure to come to council. For the funding agreement, you've already approved the budget, but the commitment for 10 years is really the big ask. This is obviously not binding, but a commitment to supporting East Rail in the future. This would be in agreement with EP, King County, and the cities of Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, Renton, and Woodenville, other entities that are part of the regional, East Rail Regional Advisory Council, such as Puget Sound Energy in Snohomish County. They are working out their own mutual agreements with the East Rail Partners, just based on their own procurement policies. And so the first one is really just a commitment to supporting the body of work and the East Rail Partners and what they've done. And the second one is the two-party agreement between the City of Kirkland and East Rail Partners, essentially is that mechanism for us to deliver the funds that have already been approved.
Counsel? Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to move that we approve the memorandum of agreement and the funding agreement with East Rail Partners and authorize the city manager his designated to execute the agreements.
Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Falcone, to approve the memorandum of agreement. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Mayor was so quick to the motion that I didn't get to ask a question of the staff. So just one quick question with the staff, and this is kind of for us, my colleagues, but also mainly for members of the public. Like, one of the things that jumps out at you in reading the materials is Bellevue's contribution is smaller than Kirkland's contribution, despite the fact that there's more miles of East Rail in Bellevue versus Kirkland, but I think there's a good reason for that.
Yes.
And the good reason for that is?
The funding levels were based on a formula that was put together when the East Rail Partners first became an entity. And the amounts are based on miles, or first, based on miles of ownership, and Bellevue does not own the East Rail within Bellevue. King County owns that, and so King County is paying the share essentially on Bellevue, is contributing, but they're essentially a stakeholder.
Okay. They're sharing despite the fact that they don't own right of way.
Yeah.
And the county's amount is increased by that 7.5 mile.
Yes.
That's in Bellevue that the county does own.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Questions on the motion to approve the MOA? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right, we are moving on to 9D, which is review the Human Services Grant Rapid Response Plan and approval of a fiscal note. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this topic is following up on direction from the council to return with this. It's a presentation that will be given by our Human Services Manager, Jen Boone, and our Human Services Coordinator, Annie Smith, and we are looking for council approval.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jen Boone, the Human Services Manager. With me tonight is...
And I'm Annie Smith, one of the Human Services Coordinators with a focus on equity.
So a quick background before we jump in. So we are returning following the August 6 council meeting, where council approved three of the options that were outlined by staff in response to the Human Services Commission that was received by you all on July 7, 2025. The three options were to amend existing human services contracts, establish a rapid response fund, and then further analysis completed during the mid-bioennial budget So tonight, we are here to provide a status update on the three options that you directed staff to follow up on. We are also requesting council action on three items. The first is authorization of the proposed fiscal note in your packet of $166,289 that will allow us to establish the rapid response fund. We're also seeking your direction on the criteria and development of the request for proposal process. And then finally, if there's any specific items you'd like staff to return with when we return with an update during the mid-bi-budget analysis.
So I will be taking you through the next six slides, hopefully pretty quickly. So let's get started with option one, and this is an update on our 2025, 2026 Human Services Contract Amendments. And so part of the outreach plan that we have started the development on will include an email that we'll construct with staff, with our Human Services staff, and that will go out in an email. So that messaging will go out in an email to current grantees, those who are currently funded through our Human Services Grants. And then that will offer the amendment option, and at the same time, it will also notify them of the RFP opportunity, and then the details will be included in that. So our plan at this point is to send that messaging out in conjunction with the RFP posting. Currently, that date is for September 8, and I'll be talking a little bit more about that timeline. So option two, this is split into two different slides. So to start, we'll talk about the establishing of that rapid response fund and talk to you about our timeline. So staff will be sending out this RFP opportunity to all organizations and partners that we are currently funding. As I said before, we're also including those who have applied. Even if they didn't receive funding, they'll be included in the messaging. So this is a really aggressive timeline, and we're really excited about it. We have done a lot of work to tee up all of these documents to make sure that they're ready to go once we get feedback tonight and receive your next direction. So you can review that, and then at the end, when we're talking about this, let me know if you have any questions. So moving on to the second part of our update on the rapid response fund, RFP, here's that criteria that we talked about. So these items include who exactly we're talking about as far as human services that are being provided in the City of Kirkland by organizations, looking to those who are bilingual and bicultural. bilingual and bicultural staff who are doing that work, really trying to find those who have current programming that highlights that deep cultural understanding of the work and that are supporting those identified population, community members, and also the ability to fully expend that grant funding through the end of December 31st of 2026. Those organizations who are 501(c)(3) holders or are represented by a fiscal sponsor also who have the 501(c)(3) designation as well. And then finally, the ability to submit those reports and invoices as required upon contracting. So those reports will come in quarterly. So as you saw in that timeline, that would be as of October 1st. So by the time we have those all in. And then, moving on to option three, update on that. So this really is going to include that broader review of federal policy impacts in human services. We really want to make sure that we're, as you all identified at our last meeting, there are lots of different areas of human services that are going to be impacted. So we're focusing on immigrants, refugees, and asylum-seeking folks for this funding. But there are so many other areas that we will need to address. And so there is currently a staff work group already established, and they will be doing that tracking, have been doing that tracking, and will provide that update. So, back to council direction for this evening. What we're requesting for council action. Number one, authorizing that proposed fiscal note of $166,289 for the rapid response fund. Also seeking some additional direction on our proposed criteria for the RFP. And also, any specific items that staff should include or focus on, any areas of concern and policy that you'd like included in the mid-bi budget analysis report. And so I'll stop there and allow you time for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
I actually appreciate the work. I think you have done what we asked you to do, and I do support moving forward with it. In terms of the next steps, though, I guess I'm questioning, are you working with other agencies in other cities to determine, you know, kind of, I mean, let's not each invent the wheel again. So just want to make sure that that's part of our process.
We have notified eight different cities that we are moving forward with this process and invited them, if they were interested, to potentially partner on the RFP, recognizing that we fund a lot of the same organizations doing the work. So we are exploring some interest with a few cities, but none have committed at this point.
Thanks, Jen.
There are some conversations with neighboring cities, Redmond specifically, around some dollars that they might have potentially available, but they're not ready to take action yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you both for this, for your thoughtfulness. And I can tell so much hard work, both intellectual work and emotional labor went into this. This is really important, and so thank you for that. I know that this is, in my mind, some of the most important work that the city does is helping support folks who are most in need and partnering with folks to help meet those needs. So thank you for that. I had a similar question to Councilmember Sweet, as one of my questions, but around all of the pieces, right? Like, I think you answered, if I heard correctly, in response to collaborating, potential collaboration with other cities on this immediate need that we've identified with immigrant, refugee, and asylum-seeking folks in our community. And I have the same question around our discussion, the kind of the staff work group that's been put together. I know that, you know, you as Human Services Staff collaborate regularly with other jurisdictions and your counterparts in other jurisdictions. So I'm curious if we've had conversations about, you know, the discussion we're going to be having at the mid-bi around both identifying what the needs are and funding it, you know, have we or can we have conversations around, like, how do we, you know, do this holistically, you know, in our little part of the world here, right? Are there ways that we can collaborate either on, you know, that we each kind of take one area of need or certain areas of need, or we otherwise collaborate? I'm sure those conversations are likely happening, but I just want to throw support behind that. And then, two other questions I have. You mentioned that when the RFP goes out on September 8th, that we're going to reach out to organizations that have, either currently have grant funding or previously received grant funding from the city. Are there other organizations that we're aware of that perhaps have never applied for city funding that we can also reach out to? I just want to make sure I know that there are systemic barriers to, you know, receiving grants and applying for grants in government, or maybe there's new, you know, for a variety of reasons, there may be organizations who, I know that the RFP is likely to be open, but I hope that we'll be, if there are. I don't know enough about which organizations or if there are organizations we haven't partnered with in the past, but I would hope that that would be part of that, too.
So, yeah, just to respond, yeah, there are organizations who are currently doing all of this work without funding. So they will be invited. They will be, we'll share that information with them as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then, I have another question around just the process. I'm not necessarily giving a preference here, which is really a question on your vision in involvement of the Human Services Commission in evaluating these applications. I mean, obviously, they bring value. That's why we have, you know, why we appoint folks to our boards and commissions. And at the same time, we know that there's a very urgent need and that adding, like, layers of, you know, bureaucracy to things can slow things down, right? And so I'm curious kind of what the involvement of the Human Services Commission will likely to be for both now and also the discussions at the mid-bi.
Yeah, that's a great question. We already actually have a group that have volunteered, and so they're ready. We're going to put together some guidelines, and I'll be taking them through that process. And we also have one of our leadership, part of the leadership team who has also, who has gone through this process before, will help take the newer. We really wanted to focus on our newer commissioners. So this is actually a twofer, right? They also get this practice before our upcoming grant review, and they'll also get, like, more of a small, mini practice through this.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, thank you, Annie. Thank you, Jen, for being here, super late. As we look at your questions here, a couple of pieces of feedback. One is, I have some concerns with Councilmember Falcone's idea of expanding the rapid response funding beyond organizations that we have already funded for a couple of reasons. One is, the Human Services Commission went through a big vetting and analysis process and prioritized a set of organizations that they recommended to us to fund. And part of what we're looking at this rapid response fund is saying, those organizations are saying, because of things happening at the federal level, we're, have additional needs that we're responding to. And I think that's the first priority versus other organizations that may be doing good work and adding to who we're funding. So I would be very cautious in adding to who we're funding through the rapid response program versus people that we've already prioritized and vetted. Second piece of feedback is that I do agree with Councilmember Falcone on the third point. As we look at the mid-bi, definitely am looking for the wisdom from staff and the Human Services Commission, not just on the plan, but really, I am struggling with the philosophy of how we go deal with this. We're starting right now with immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers because they were the first impacted. They're not going to be the last impacted. And I think the recognition with the mid-bi is saying, okay, what are we going to be doing to help everybody else? But state and local government just cannot step in and fill in the gap that's left by the federal government and the not-so-big, beautiful bill. So what I'm looking for, as we look in the mid-bi, is a philosophy of saying, what's our role? Where can we do the most good for the most people? And that's where I think the expertise from the Human Services Commission and staff would be most helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, did you want to talk?
I would.
Okay, go ahead, and then I want to follow up.
But I don't need to cut you off.
I used to be the last.
You're going to go last? Okay. I just have, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you so much for this work and for the memo and the presentation and everything. I just had one question about the criteria for applicant eligibility. And it's the fourth bullet, must have current programming that highlights a deep cultural understanding of working with and supporting the above identified populations. I wanted to understand, does that suggest, does that actually require that the rapid response funds will be spent to support immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers? Or is it just that the organization has to have a program? Is that the only criteria? And I guess I'm begging the question, which is, should we require that the funds be spent to support the vulnerable population that we are seeking to support through the rapid action?
The intent with that criteria is to ensure that we're supporting existing programming that's already happening on the ground. Because it's one-time funding through 2026, we're not trying to encourage organizations to start new programs or hire new staff. So we're looking for established traction of supporting those identified communities.
Okay. I mean, I wonder if it's implied, but if it's not, I wonder if it can be made more explicit with sort of a comma, and the funds will be spent in support of those existing programs that you have that support immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers?
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I want to follow up on Deputy Mayor's comment about providing these rapid response grants to organizations that we've already provided grants to. The impetus for this was when organizations came to us and said, we are at a crisis situation and we need more funds. Do you anticipate that we will get requests from organizations that we haven't currently funded?
Yes.
And we, specifically supporting immigrant populations and refugees and asylum seekers was not in our original criteria for how we wanted to give human services grants, correct? So it's challenging to close the door on organizations who have an immediate need when we haven't met this need before. So I question your request about just funding organizations that we've already funded before, because this is an emergent need that we haven't funded before.
I do want to clarify with the commission's recommendations, they did hear from several organizations that do not currently receive funding. So their recommendations assume that we would open it to organizations that perhaps applied and we did not fund. So an example would be Brazilian Community Services. We did not fund them for '25, '26. One of their priority populations served identified communities.
Yeah. So I'm questioning Deputy Mayor whether you want to rethink that.
I appreciate the clarification in thinking that these are organizations that have received some review before. And I think that's important versus an organization that may be new.
That we know nothing about.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Falcone?
Are we ready for a motion?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I move that we authorize the proposed fiscal note to fund a Human Services Rapid Response Fund with $166,289 using one-time revenues.
And moved by Councilmember Falcone, second by Councilmember Sweet to approve the fiscal note. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Taffet?
If we have not dealt with an organization before, I would like some level of vetting to happen, and I don't know exactly what that is. But this seems to be moving rather fast with a whole lot of question marks. And money that's used responsibly can help people, but money that's given to organizations without significant or sufficient vetting isn't going to help people because it's probably not going to get to the right places. So can you speak a little bit to the concerns that we've heard about organizations that we have not dealt with yet, and what level of vetting or analysis would take place before giving them money?
So these organizations will go through the same vetting that we do with all of our organizations. So there are additional criteria, so we will be checking on our 501(c)(3), making sure that they're in good standing. If they have a fiscal sponsor, we'll be looking to those items as well. They have to have insurance coverage like any other grantee that we have. So we have our prescribed criteria that will require regardless. So it's, there is not, no vetting. There will be vetting, just like any other organization. Does that answer your question?
Well, maybe we can get periodic updates in the future as to how this is going.
Yeah, and there will be continued reporting that we'll require from these organizations. So we'll be checking in with them, just like any other of our grantees that we hold a contract. There'll be a full contract. If we're not adding additional funds to an existing contract, then there'll be a new contract.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. The question is on the motion to approve the Rapid Response Fund fiscal note. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
So just to finish up, next steps. So we received that authorization, yay, thank you very much. So with the feedback from council that we received today, we're going to move forward. We'll add those recommendations to what we have right now, and we'll move forward with the RFP process. And then staff will conduct our outreach, and we will keep you all updated on how this is going. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, Jen gets to stay.
I do.
All right, we're moving on to consideration of Homelessness Continuum of Care Action Plan positions and service levels. City Manager?
So thank you. We're looking for some early actions from the Homelessness Action Plan. The goal is to discuss them today and then to have action at the next council meeting. So here to give that presentation is our Parks and Community Services Director, Lynn Zogstra, as well as, once again, Jen Boone, our Human Services Manager.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started while Jen's getting that presentation up, which I greatly appreciate. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Thank you. It is like magic. Jen and I are here to talk to you this evening about some early actions from the Homelessness Continuum of Care Action Plan that was discussed with City Council on June 17th. Staff are requesting City Council consideration for adopting two early actions that were proposed in the Homelessness Continuum of Care Action Plan, that being two specific positions. At the end of the presentation, we will ask for your direction on how you would like to proceed with these two positions. But first, we will just discuss a little bit about the specific early actions, as well as the actual positions themselves, some information about that, the human services staffing structure, estimated costs, a quick update on the space that could potentially house these positions, and then we will end with council discussion and direction. In 2023, the city manager initiated an interdepartmental process on coordinating the city's response to the homelessness, the growing and emerging homelessness and housing crisis, if you will. And really, our goal was to support a more efficient and effective response and to support the King County Health Through Housing Program that is anticipated to come in the fourth quarter of 2025. Also, to identify gaps in the system that were identified by our Boots on the Ground Homeless Outreach Coordinator. This process involved robust community and stakeholder engagement, and the process yielded the first draft of the Continuum of Care Action Plan. There were four priority themes that were identified at that time, and those centered around prevention, outreach, shelter capacity, and subsidized permanent housing. Theme number two, as you can see up here, is to continue and exp- Theme number two, as you can see up here, is to continue and expand support for the coordinated response to homelessness, notably HART, which is the Homeless Assistance and Response Team. Two positions were identified as high priority early actions, especially given the imminency of the Health Through Housing Program, again, scheduled for this year. The two positions identified, the first one is a Housing Navigation Coordinator, and that position would support clients through housing navigation and case management. And the second position is a Human Services Supervisor that would oversee and guide the outreach services. And here to talk to you in more detail about those two positions and how they would work is Jen.
So I'm going to walk through with the proposal of these two new additional positions, how they'll interface with the homeless outreach coordinator, as well as the homeless outreach and response team. So the first is the supervisor, as we talked about at the June 17th council meeting. The main priority in bringing on this position is to provide an additional layer of support for staff that are on the grounds doing the work. So this position would be responsible for direct supervision of both the homeless outreach coordinator, as well as the housing navigation coordinator. So being able to provide both administrative oversight and then that emotional level of support that we talked about in greater detail at the June 17th meeting. We also expect this position to be a liaison to the HART team, as well as work with the other city departments that, as we know, requires extensive coordination when we're responding to an encampment on the CKC or maybe somewhere in a park. As Lynn mentioned, they will be responsible for oversight of the growing programs, so overseeing success of the pilot programs that are currently being funded in this biennium, as well as budget oversight of those programs and being able to report on those successes. And then with our new data sharing software that we have, being able to report on the outcomes, that was one of the actions that was flagged in the action plan, is what you would like to see from the growth of this program and how we can report the success of that program back to you. So they would be responsible for that oversight. And then finally, we do hope they will have expertise in being able to provide outreach coverage as needed. We're trying to intentionally grow our bench, recognizing we have one dedicated position currently, so we do want someone that has the expertise that can come in and provide that additional support as needed. Moving on to the Housing Navigation Coordinator, I do want to note in the action plan and the draft that was first presented, you heard Housing Case Manager, so you might be wondering what's with the name change. So the Housing Navigation Coordinator aligns more closely with our existing job classes here at the city, as well as aligns with our neighboring jurisdictions that have similar positions. So we've aligned that there for better continuity. So as it implies, this position will be focused on providing that housing navigation support and case management, which currently is housed under the Homeless Outreach Coordinator, which limits capacity for both immediate response and then working with folks on the caseload for existing housing inventory and housing needs. So this position also is intended to provide outreach coverage as needed, so looking for someone that, you know, has that background in outreach but can also do that case management. But ultimately, their focus will be on taking folks that are on their caseload and working to successfully transition them into stable housing. So one of the other additions of bringing this position online now is it adds to our capacity to ensure success of local referral placement for the Health Through Housing facility that's slated to open later this year. So how these kind of work with the existing homeless outreach coordinator, so this position currently focuses on outreach, case management, and housing navigation. So this would really sharpen the focus of this position to be able to provide more immediate response in the field and be that first point of contact when a community member is calling, a business is calling, or we receive in our Kirkland. So they're really still focused on that relationship-building piece, but then have the ability to pass that person off to the Housing Navigation Coordinator to then move into kind of an individual service plan and housing stability plan. So again, they are able to provide support with case management as needed. I expect some fluidity between these two positions, just given the size of the team. And we want to encourage that, recognizing that one of them may be out, and being able to have some fluidity between those two positions. So we've intentionally drafted job descriptions to align with that vision. And then finally, we still anticipate the homeless outreach coordinator supporting referrals into Health Through Housing later this year. So kind of the six pillars that we've flagged in looking at adding on these two new positions is around leadership and coordination, direct outreach and engagement, and then housing navigation and case management. So through the addition of adding on these positions to expand the response, it allows for a more sustainable and coordinated response that allows us to be more timely in our responses to the community while providing a more compassionate, accountable response on the city's end. So the current biennium estimated cost in bringing on the two positions is here on the screen. So staff are still exploring funding sources that if council provided direction, we would bring back a fiscal note at the September 16th meeting that outline these funding sources. These numbers reflect an October estimated hiring date, but again, subject to change.
And just a quick update for you, the city's facility manager has executed a purchase-and-sale agreement with Valley School District in Eastern Washington for a lightly-used mobile classroom that would be converted into office space. That unit is supposed to be transferred to the city of Kirkland by the end of the month, at which point it would be renovated, and it's estimated to be installed at City Hall in 2026. So that space is sufficient enough to house all of the current human services staff, as well as the two new positions and the CASARC position. So on that note, we come to council discussion and question. So the, the question is, would council like to adopt the early actions, specifically the two positions mentioned? Or would you like to have this considered during the mid-biannual budget cycle? Or alternatively, also bring that back with the transmittal of the action plan?
Councilwoman Sweet?
I say go for it. I thought we had this discussion already, and I, I truly believe that there is some urgency required here because of the opening of the, the housing program. These people are going to have to be working hard with the county in terms of making that, that process fluid. So I think we need to bring them on board as soon as possible, and I will support that tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ditto to Councilwoman Sweet. I mean, I support this. I think it makes sense. It was really thoughtful to bring this back as a standalone, you know, before some of the other work, just given the timeline sensitivities to, you know, the need in our community. So I support it, and thank you for bringing this to us.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Tempsis?
It does make sense to have these people trained up before the Health Through Housing opens so that they can hopefully position our residents to be housed there. But my ongoing concern about this is how much financial responsibility the city will continue to take on because of the Health Through Housing location in Kirkland. We're taking on two FTEs that are going to be $400-plus thousand dollars a year. We may have a lot of fire response and a lot of other financial responsibilities, and all of these financial responsibilities are going to start piling up. And I'm concerned about what the city takes on and what we negotiate for the county to pay. And right now, I see zero financial contribution coming from the county for these two FTEs, 100% of it being paid for by the city. And I think we need to keep track of, you know, our, our ever-expending, expanding costs associated with this Health Through Housing and hopefully negotiate for the county to make a contribution. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Councilwoman Tempsis, and I just want to respond to your comment because my belief is this is, these two FTEs are not just in response to the Health Through Housing, this is addressing the homeless population that we have throughout the city of Kirkland. So this isn't driven by Health Through Housing, it's acknowledging the people that are unhoused in our community and how we can support them and move them into housing and provide them case management support. So I also will support both of these hires as quickly as possible.
And may I respond, since you've addressed me directly? I was responding to other council members who just said from the dais that we need to move forward on this because of the opening of the Health Through Housing. So it's obviously a part of this conversation, and I don't know what percentage of time these two FTEs will be dedicated to this, but it is a contributing factor towards the expanding expenses that we're going to have as a city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to acknowledge, like it was presented to us during our study session tonight, just the, the huge need for very low-income housing in our community because of folks who are chronically unhoused, which is what the Health Through Housing is going to help, but also just folks who are struggling, folks with disabilities, there may be adults with disabilities, our senior citizens in our community. As we know, we have a need for thousands and thousands of units of, of housing for 0% to 30% area of medium income, and a huge proportion of that is also permanent supportive housing, like Health Through Housing. So I think that the need for staff is going to just, as our need grows, will continue to grow, and as we know with what we, just the, the previous briefing where we talked about the discussions we're going to be having around the growing needs because of what's happening at the federal level, the need is just growing. And so I think it's wise, just to clarify my comments, it's wise to have this in place as soon as possible because of the growing need, but also just so that we are prepared to serve the community the best way. It's not solely for the Health Through Housing. But in my mind, the Health Through Housing, it's a shared responsibility on, on different levels of government, and so I'm thankful for King County for doing their part to help support folks in our community here who are unhoused and help house them, and we continue to be a part of that conversation and a part of the solution to help folks in our community. So I just want to, to clarify my comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I, I see this Housing Navigation Coordinator as somebody that's helping people that are experiencing homelessness today get into housing, and that housing is independent of where the Health Through Housing exists. Today, we have examples of people that were in RVs that got permanent housing in Health Through Housing in Redmond. And so what, what this position is, is saying it's finding the, the right places there. And we have within the Health Through Housing in Kirkland, 65% of the slots that can, are to get people off the streets in Kirkland. And I think this is an investment to say, for the people we know today in safe parking, for the people we know today in RVs, how do we make sure that they get, that, that we're using the slots that have been dedicated to us, that we can get them off the streets and into housing? And I think that's the investment. This is something we would need to do regardless of whether Health Through Housing existed in Kirkland or was built somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you both. I think you have direction to move forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now at our final business item, which is Interview Selection Committee Recommendations for Interviews for the Tourism Development Committee Recruitment. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to see what the council wants to confirm the recommendation of the committee, which is to interview all the candidates that submitted applications.
I move that we accept the recommendation. Uh, what is it for? This is the ISC recommendation about tourism.
Yes.
That's correct.
I second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, just, well, go ahead, Councilwoman Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank staff for their recruitment, hard work in recruiting folks to apply for these positions. We, you know, as Councilwoman Sweet and I serve on the Tourism Development Committee, we know that it's hard to fill some of these vacancies on TDC, and I'm thrilled that we're in a position where we have more applicants than empty seats. That's a position I don't think we've been in since I've been on council, at least not since I've been on TDC. So thankful for the community and everyone who applied, and thankful for staff for the great outreach and getting these very well-qualified applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions on the motion to approve the Interview Selection Committee Recommendation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now moving on to council reports at 11:00 PM. Deputy Mayor?
I will sit by email. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pascal?
I have, I wanted to propose a legislative request memo. I sent this to the rest of the council already, but let me read kind of what I was thinking. The construction season has resulted in many partial and full closures of streets and bike lanes and sidewalks across the city, and we're also experiencing our first full closure of the Cross Kirkland Corridor. I know that we've all received input and, on that and, and concern around just the length of the closure. And I know that when we decide on these closures, we're really trying to strike the right balance between public and worker safety, safe transportation access, project costs and completion. And as we continue to see development activity across the city, as we continue to make progress on capital improvements, I think it's worth reviewing whether we're striking that right balance and if we need to update any of our current policy, closure policies. Furthermore, I'm also, I also understand that there is currently no established policy for formal, for CKC closures, and given that that's a very important transportation corridor, I think it's worth discussing more. So I move that we approve a legislative request memo for options to review and update our partial and full closure policies for streets, sidewalks, and bike lanes, and options to establish closure policies for the Cross Kirkland Corridor.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Pascal, seconded by Councilwoman Sweet to approve an LRM to address what Pascal said. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That it? Okay. Councilwoman Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick things. One, I just want to say that a couple of us, I know I saw Mayor Curtis there, and I attended Redmond Pride this past week, past weekend, and it was an amazing event. This is the fourth year they've, they've hosted this event, and it's really an event for the whole East Side, for both for folks in the 2S LGBTQIA+ community and also allies to get together and just celebrate and have fun. There were amazing vendors and food trucks and performances, and I had a chance to help promote the Umbrella Fringe Festival with Kirkland Art Center at the event as well. So it was a great event, so just want to thank everybody, Pride Across the Bridge, who helped organize that event, and all the volunteers. It's a lot of hard work. Secondly, I just want to say happy first day of school to all the families in Lake Washington School District. This is a big day, it's an exhausting day, and that brought up a thought that I had to add for consideration for our next council retreat, that having our first meeting in September, the day after Labor Day, is typically the first day of school for a lot of families, both on council and staff. And it's also the day after a holiday, which I know brings challenges to a council meeting. So I'd like to just add to a future council retreat discussion, consideration of moving our first meeting in September, that could look like maybe being on Wednesday instead of the Tuesday of that week. But I know we have this for other considerations. For example, during National Night Out, we, you know, we move our, our council meeting. So something that I'd like for us to discuss at a future retreat. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sweet?
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Black?
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Tempsis?
Nothing to report. We're, we're going to go to executive session, so I'll just cut it short.
All right, City Manager?
Okay, thank you. Just one quick topic before I get to calendar, which is Kraken update. We don't have a formal Kraken update, but thanks to the resources you gave us last time, I just want to let you know that Annika Davis, as well as staff from Parks Security Services, are working closely with the Kraken design team on the community center. That's going well. There's, there's definitely some issues in that we presented them with an option, and they're actually designing the building, so we're having some back and forth, and should anything need your attention, we'll bring it to you. We're also still waiting for the Kraken to send us back the language on the guarantee. We are assured that it's coming, and we've also been clear to them that there will be no action by the city council until we have that guaranteed. You've had a lot of chance to look at all the documents fully and multiple times. So things are going really well, and they're investing still. They know they're investing at their own risk, but I think both sides continue to be confident that we're going to get to a good resolution, and the council will have time to look at it very thoughtfully before you make your decision. Happy to answer any questions.
I see none.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and move to calendar. Any calendar updates from the council before?
Councilor Pascal.
Thank you. I don't know if this is a calendar or a data, or just a request for more information, but, you know, I am pretty concerned about some of the comments that we've heard on the water pressure issue in Highlands, and so looking forward to kind of seeing how we can expedite any types of fixes there. But the other thing that I've learned just out and about in the community is that there's other pressure and water flow issues in other areas of the city, areas where, where homes are required to have sprinklers, and these are also areas where we're seeing, you know, more development activity in our neighborhoods. And so, you know, we're completing the Fire Proposition 1 investments, you know, adding more, renovating our fire stations, adding more firefighters, but, you know, if there isn't the infrastructure there to actually fight a fire, that's problematic. And I'd like to understand where these, where these areas are in the city. I haven't seen a map, how they're going to be addressed or in the water, the water plan, and then just how are these things factored into the development review process? Because the last thing we want to do is to create a public safety risk without being proactive on how to address these, these areas. So that's, I don't know if that's just information that can be provided, or if that's a briefing that...
It probably makes sense to have that as a briefing. I think to give the context and be able to answer questions, but we can certainly provide some information early as well. There isn't a map, because as you may all recall, most cities, including us, don't provide critical infrastructure maps that are easily accessible on the internet, but obviously, we can make a presentation that includes those locations generally. Yeah, I would recommend...
Yeah, I guess, yeah, or just some kind of way of understanding the magnitude.
Yeah, yeah.
Of this.
I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Councilor Sweet.
I recall when we used to have the public safety meetings, we did have maps that identified areas where we had already predetermined that we needed...
That's correct.
Okay. I can think of two or three of them right now, so there's a fashion of maps.
All right, I will add that and find the right time to bring that back, so.
Councilman Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just preliminarily, City Manager, just as I'm thinking about the severity of this potential problem, the, I assume that water pressure, the water pressure in the, in the fire suppression system is different than the water pressure for housing, and we monitor the pressure in the fire suppression system pretty closely throughout the system. Is that true?
Excuse me? Yes, for us, it's pressure at the hydrant, as well as, so I'm rapidly going to get on my depth if you ask me another question, but...
No, okay. That helps me sleep tonight, just knowing that when it comes to our fire suppression system and the pressure in that system, it doesn't, it doesn't change any concerns we may have with residential water pressures, but I just wanted to sleep well tonight, knowing that when it comes to...
It is correct that we do have some areas of the city where we now require that any residential development has an in-house sprinkler in it because of the, of some of those issues, so.
Because of the pressure at the hydrant in the fire suppression system?
That's been that case for decades, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, I was waiting for that conversation to finish. There's nothing else from us up here.
That's all I have.
Okay. We will now go into executive session to discuss potential litigation, as authorized by RCW 4231101I2 and 3. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at approximately 10:30, or 11:30, only for the purposes of adjournment. Thank you, everyone.